Okay, you've heard your consent agenda. We need a motion to approve.
Sure. Mr. Haynes. Commissioner Latour.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Person.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Vogel. Commissioner Vickers.
Present.
And Chair Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Haynes is here.
Commissioner Haynes is present. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I believe everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve last minute minutes, please.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
Yes.
Hart?
Here. Yes, sorry.
Minnesota approved.
Okay, thank you all for being here. We have no less than 12 items on the regular agenda. Before we get started with the consent agenda, Monty, I do want to go over the numbers of what I have on the regular agenda. I like to do that before we get started. So I have the following on the regular agenda. Items two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
That is correct, except for we're moving item 11 to consent withdrawal.
11 goes to consent withdrawal, okay? Other than that, we're square on that? Okay, all right. First item on our agenda tonight, after the approval of the minutes, I guess it's the second item on our agenda, is the reading of our consent agenda. So, Mr. Moore, I'll turn it over to you.
Following is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of October 12, 2023. You have two items on consent withdrawal. Item D, file number Z 5817M, Cantrell West, PCD 15122 Cantrell Road. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on September 29th requesting this application be withdrawn without prejudice. Staff supports that request. Item 11, Z 9766A, Moreno STR2 PDC, 13,008 West Markham Street. The applicant submitted a request to staff to withdraw without prejudice. Staff supports that request. You have three items on consent deferral. First is item C, LU 2023 1402 Land Use Plan Amendment, Guyer Springs Ease Planning District, from residential low to commercial, 4,400 baseline road. And the accompanying rezoning, C Point 1, Z 9815, rezoning from R2 to C3, 4,400 baseline road. The applicant failed to send notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends that C and C Point 1 be deferred to the November 9, 2023 agenda. Item E, Z 7500J, Hamilton Station Phase 2, revised PCD, north of 14524 Cantrell Road. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on September 29th requesting this application be deferred to the November 9th agenda. Staff supports that request. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, Z 9761 McGrath 1, STR2, PCD, 407 North Amburden Street. Staff recommends approval of the PCD rezoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item B, Z 9814, White Group Home Special Use Permit, 10,014 Chico Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested SUP as revised by the applicant, and subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 1, S 1847A, Tamelia Hinton Edition Preliminary Platte, north side of West 24th Street, west of Walker Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested three lot preliminary platte, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 3, Z 9828, Pacheco Modular Home, Conditional Use Permit, 3705 West 18th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 10, Z 9833, Petracchina STR1, Special Use Permit, 1315 West 10th Street. Staff recommends approval of the SUP, subject to compliance with all comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 14, Z 9830, Joe Investments STR2 PDC, 1323 Cumberland Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 15, Z 9832, Holdfast Homes STR2 PDC, 2608 West 6th Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 20, Z 9830, 9838, Infinity Homes STR2 PDC, 321 North Pierce Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And the final item on consent approval is item 21, modifications to the UU zoning district. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, you've heard your consent agenda. We need a motion to approve.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the staff recommendations for approval, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined within.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
Yes.
And Hart?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda has been...
The agenda has been approved.
Approved.
Sir.
All right, so if your item was on the consent agenda and you happen to be here and you are welcome to stay, but we need your chair, so you can watch the rest. You can watch the rest on TV if you'd like. Your item was approved. I did have one card here of note from Annette Sheed, who was here to speak in favor of item 10. I did not let you speak because you were on consent agenda and the item got approved, so. Okay, first item on the regular agenda, and, Monty, we'll just take these in number order. So we'll just go item number 2.
First item, number 2, file number Z 9825. This is Brown-Irby Duplex Conditional Use Permit, 2416 Johnson Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the conversion of a single-family residence into a two-family or duplex residential dwelling. The property contains an existing 2,284 square foot, single-family residence, taking access from Johnson Street. The property is secured by a chain link fence on all sides, except the Johnson Street side. The site is just south of Asher Avenue corridor and surrounded by R3 zoning and uses. The applicant notes that the landlord will occupy one of the duplex units. The applicant is providing parking to satisfy Section 36502 of the code for the duplex. And to staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. The applicant is requesting no variances with this request. Staff feels the proposed duplex is an appropriate use for the property, and the duplex will not be out of character with other properties in the general area. Represents only a minor increase in density and will have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Is the applicant for the Brown-Irby duplex present tonight? Okay, if you'll come up and state your name, please, and you're welcome to visit with us about your application, or you can wait and defer until after we have heard from the opposition. I do have one card from someone in opposition.
My name is Shawanda Brown-Irby, and I am the applicant for 2416 Johnson Street in Little Rock.
Okay, you want to wait and hear from the opposition, and there may be some questions from commissioners, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I have one card who is in opposition to this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing, just to point out, you have seven commissioners present.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Let me mention this at the outset. We have a total of 11 commissioner slots for Little Rock Planning Commission, okay? And so it takes six yes votes to approve an item, all right? So if you are presenting an item tonight or sponsoring an item, know that it takes a total of six votes. Tonight, because of some absentees, we have a total of seven members present, okay? So you'll have to get six of the seven positive votes, right, in order for your agenda item to be approved. When we have less than eight, we do allow for a deferral without prejudice to the applicant. So in other words, you can defer because we don't have enough commissioners present, or you can go ahead and have your item heard. It is totally up to you on how you want to do that. So I do need to give you the option to defer until more commissioners are present, perhaps at a later meeting, or you can have your item heard tonight, either way.
Item heard, please.
You...I didn't hear you.
Item heard.
Oh, item heard, okay, all right. Let me call up the one card I have in opposition. I believe it's Vera Robinson. Ms. Robinson, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I also want to make a note, and this will apply to all of the applications tonight, both the for, the sponsor of the agenda item, and the against, each have 20 minutes total, right? So you don't have to use 20 minutes, but if there are, say, 10 people speaking out in opposition, you have a total of 20 minutes, okay? So if one person gets up and speaks for 18 minutes, the other nine people won't have that much time to talk, okay? And then Mr. Thrower normally keeps our time over there. So, okay, Ms. Robinson.
Hello, my name is Vera Robinson. I own property at 2420 Johnson. I am opposed to the Brown-Irby duplex and the conditional use permit for 2416 Johnson. My reasons and concerns are, first, parking. There is not enough parking area for a duplex. It was a single-family home, it has a driveway, parking out front, two-family home, there's not enough parking. Although there is an adjacent, two adjacent lots, we assume that these lots are going to be, homes are going to be built on these lots within the next two to three years. We're also concerned about the maintenance of the duplex and the yard. At the present time, it's not being kept up. We are concerned. We also like to know how many will be allowed to live in each unit in the duplex concerning the parking. And we want to know if the duplex will be approved before the house or duplex is completed. Right now, it's not completed. Those are my concerns.
Okay, at this point, we normally allow the applicant to address those, so if you'd like to address those comments and questions, and then after that, if the commissioners have any questions, they can jump in.
As far as the parking, the parking is suitable right now, but I am adding a driveway just to the left of the sidewalk. It'll be a 10-foot driveway appropriate for parking for two vehicles. The duplex will consist of two bedrooms, one bath, and I will retain ownership of one of the duplexes. And as far as the yard, the yard is kept up. I have receipts and verifications of the tenant that lives in Ms. Vera Robinson's house next door to the property. He is paid to maintain the property, and it is visibly maintained as we speak. And maintenance has been according. There is a building permit on the property because on the back end of the house, it was a little bit of rot and deterioration. it was a little bit of rot and deterioration. And I have had that redone, but not completely finished.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners or comments from staff?
Yes, I'm sorry. As far as the parking, can you address the concerns with the parking?
Well, there really is no concerns with the parking. We're going to have a, it's a driveway, a concrete driveway already there that also extends underneath the carport. And next to the sidewalk, there will be another driveway of 10-foot that will be added there. And it will be suitable for two cars.
So next to that house, let's see. I think I'm looking, that'll be east of the house? That's a vacant lot? Is this still just an open plot of land there?
Yes, it's not. The driveway is going to be in the front of 2416 Johnson. Both driveways will be right next to each other with the sidewalk in between them. So the lots will not have a driveway in it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So how many parking spaces can fit? How many vehicles can fit in each parking space?
So in the parking, the concrete driveway that's currently there, approximately three cars can fit in that parking spot. In the parking space that will be built, the concrete driveway, approximately two cars. And there is street parking as well.
And on the duplex, how many, how does your contract state on how many residents will live in each unit?
It's two bedrooms for each unit, one bathroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You said each unit has two individual bedrooms?
Yes.
So a maximum will, okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions from commissioners for the applicant? If not, we can move to a motion on this one.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve item Z-9825, approval of the requested conditional use permit, subject to the comments and conditions noted within.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconding. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas, absent. Vickers?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the regular agenda is four, Bowden Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit.
Mr. Chair, as far as the deferral offer goes, do you want to do that blanket all at once to everybody?
Well, I've done it once. Do, I'll ask our attorney, do I need to offer that up each and every, with each applicant?
I think you could do it either way. You could ask the entire audience and that way the applicants don't have to wait. And so if anyone wants to defer, you can offer them an opportunity to come up to the commission now or you can ask them individually.
That's a good idea. Okay, before we hear this item, let's do that. Our attorney has recommended that we... So again, as I mentioned before, we just have six commissioners, which means that, I mean, seven commissioners. You need six votes to get something passed. So anyone who has an item before the commission tonight, you are allowed a deferral, which will not count against you. So is there anyone who is presenting an item tonight on the regular agenda who would like to defer to next month? If so, if you'll raise your hand or come to the podium, please. Okay, seeing none, we will just proceed with our regular agenda. Okay, item four, thank you.
Item number four, file number Z 9829, Bowden Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit, 1701 East 21st Street. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow placement of a manufactured type home on the property to serve as a single-family residence. The property is zoned R3 and is located at the southeast corner of East 21st Street and Security Avenue. The applicant proposes to place a 275-square-foot manufactured type home on the property, as noted on the site plan, which was attached to your Agenda Staff Report. The building construction is similar to a tough shed or a Morgan building. The proposed structure will be located approximately 30 feet back from the front or north property line and over 30 feet back from the rear property line. The structure will be located 19.6 feet from the east side property line and approximately 27 feet from the west side property line. The structure will be one-story and will include a small covered porch on its north side. Parking pad is located at the northwest corner of the lot. If approved, the manufactured home will have to comply with the minimum siding standards that were noted in the Agenda Staff Report. Staff does not support the requested CUP. Staff's main concern is that the type of construction involved is with the type of construction involved with the proposed structure. As I noted, the building construction is similar to a tough shed or a Morgan building. Staff does not believe that the building's construction is designed for full-time occupancy as a residence. Staff does not believe the building is in conformance with the minimum construction standards of the federal mobile home regulations. Staff also believes that the exterior appearance of the structure is not compatible with the existing homes in the neighborhood. For those reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested CUP.
Thank you very much. I assume we have the applicant at the podium. If you'll state your name. We don't have anyone in opposition necessarily, but our staff did recommend denial tonight. So if you'll state your name and make your presentation, please.
Vote for Bowden.
Speak up.
Vote for Bowden.
Okay, staff is recommending that we deny this request. And so I guess I'll just open it up to the commissioners to see if anyone's got any questions or I'll also open it up to staff to see if y'all have any comments to make. Yes, sir.
Someone on the staff, you said it was a tough shed or a Morgan-style building. Can someone explain what a Morgan-style building is? So I have full context, please.
Well, if you've seen a tough shed construction, it's very similar in design and nature to that. It has a roof that's more of a barn-type, a gambriol roof, like a traditional, there are some models of the traditional tough shed in Morgan buildings.
Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Vickers?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, she wants, okay, go ahead.
I'm sure he said, I'm his friend and I'm representing, but the building is a tiny barn.
Can you come up to the mic just a little more so we can hear you?
The building is a tiny barn and it's living condition and everything. We've done everything we're supposed to have done. So I'm not understanding why you're declining it. We've paid all the property taxes, we've done all the permits, we've done everything.
Yes, staff, do y'all want to, and it was read their reasons for denial, but I'll let them just sort of outline the reasons why they don't think it's a good idea for the neighborhood. Who wants to do that? Jamie, Monty?
Chair, I will address as far as the building aspect of it. A modular home or manufactured home, we don't inspect those because when a manufactured home for residential, and you see them as mobile homes and modular homes, done at a factory, the federal government sets standards that they must adhere to for somebody to be living in them. And they have inspection stickers and, you know, that type of aspect of it and to be placed in there. When you are dealing with what we see as essentially a shed, it's not following through that same inspection procedures for it. So even though, you know, I know individuals have sheds, but they are not intended to be lived in full-time. They're for storage type scenario. So that's one of the reasons why our recommendation of denial, because for us, we would have to inspect it as a home and that, and the way those are constructed, they do not particularly meet the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code for a standard home. So either meet the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code or you meet the federal guidelines. There is not an in-between. And that's why it's recommended dial for the building structure. Mr. Moore can speak more for the looks of the area.
The design that's proposed is similar to what Brad put on the screen, the red one, the one with the blue door. This design is almost identical to those structures.
Okay, any questions from commissioners? Further comments from the applicant?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, there's nothing else around it, you know, and it's a living, it's a condition.
If you'll step over to that mic.
It's a condition in a building that is for storage or for whatever is for use, but it's in condition and it's been, it's taken care of and the lot's taken care of. You know what I'm saying? It's in a garden home that you see and nobody cares. You know what I'm saying? So...
Yes, ma'am, I understand what you're saying.
You know, and we've done everything we were supposed to say today and now, you know...
Yes, ma'am, I understand. We have to adhere to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, which is a state code. It's adopted for the entire state. Whether a municipality chooses to adopt it or not, every building has to be built to that code. Or, as I was explaining, other manufactured homes or modular homes that are produced off-site in a factory, they adhere to federal guidelines for that scenario and they're specific to people that are living in them full-time. Those are the only two guidelines that we inspect homes that they live in off of. So it's not the fact that somebody can use a manufactured home or this style of deal for that, but it has to adhere to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. And to pick one up from a storage shed manufacturer at a lot, that building itself does not meet the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. Other things have to be accommodated for that because there's additional guidelines that we have to adhere to.
So where do I come about to get all the permits? To finish this up, you know what I'm saying?
Please stay close to the, to record this.
To finish it up and everything. So what is the requirements of what we need to, you know, follow on to get it, you know? Are you saying because of federal? We have to get it what? We can't have it there or what? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, what you're asking for is just to place it there and to use it as what you have. If you're going to use a base structure to build on and add to it and put it on a foundation, then typically it's a, for what you're seeing, that's a pure foundation. The walls would have to adhere to all that. So it would be, and then I'm not trying to assume anything, I'm just, you know, you may have to add material to it.
That's what we've done. We've done that. We've done all that. We've put insulation. Insulation, we've done that. We made a bathroom and everything.
Yeah, but if it's added and we can't inspect it, then it has to be removed for inspection. And so that's the deal. If it's already in, then we, it's has to be, it's done without a permit. We have to inspect it, it has to be removed to inspect. If we can't see what was done on the inside, like the insulation or any wiring, it's required that we inspect a building as it's being constructed at several stages through the process.
Okay, that's fine because, I mean, you guys can come inspect it on account. That's what we thought that we paid to inspect it so I can permit for it, for you all to come in and look at it and see what needs to be or whatever we're doing. That's what we explained to the guy. They came out there.
And that's part of this, this process before the commission, just to make it clear, is they're retaining the building, wanting to obtain that storage building to come in and that's not a new build.
We're paying for it, yeah.
Yeah, it's manufactured comes in. So you still would have to rezone the property to allow that. And then we would have to come in and inspect on what they added. So the zoning is the only item that's before the planning commission, not the building aspect of it. If approved, they would have to adhere to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whatever codes that we have to live in that building, which may or may not be more than what they've already done or they may have to remove it. That I don't know. We don't have an inspection on the structure.
Okay, is there any way that can come about to get the inspection?
We would not come around to do that inspection until it is decided upon at this commission. And if approved at the commission, then we would schedule that. If not approved at the commission, then it would have to be removed.
Okay, well, do what you guys got to do. You know what I'm saying? Help us out, help further out.
Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Sure. So I'd like to make a motion to approve item Z-9829, the Bowden Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit, without the accepted condition of denial, if I'm saying that right. Turn it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? And we have a second, okay. A roll call, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Latur?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
No.
Hart?
No. Motion fails.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number five.
Item number five, file number Z 9831, DeBario Accessory Dwelling, Conditional Use Permit, number two, Metallock Drive. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow an existing accessory building to be converted to an accessory dwelling. The property is located at the northwest corner of Metallock Drive and Browning Road. The applicant proposes to remodel the existing accessory building as a residence for a family member. The property is occupied by a one-story brick-and-framed single-family residence located within the east half of the property. An existing 1,500-square-foot accessory building that's in question is located in the rear yard area. There's an existing one-car-wide driveway from Metallock Drive and a two-car-wide driveway from Browning Road, which serve the existing residence. The applicant proposes to construct a small parking pad from Browning Road within the rear yard area to serve the proposed accessory dwelling. The parking will be sufficient to serve both dwellings. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. The applicant is requesting no variances, and staff believes the requested CUP is reasonable and that the proposed accessory dwelling will have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant come forward, please? And I will remind you, you do have the option to defer if you wish to do that. We do have one card in opposition to this, so if you'd like to wait until that person speaks and then address their concerns, you may do that, or you may speak now.
My name is Bianca, and I'm the applicant for the dwelling at 2 Metallock Drive. This will be used for a elderly, family, parents that are needing assistance, and the owner will be the one taking care of the parents.
Okay, Mr. Lahey. And you can have a seat while he's speaking, rather than just stand up there beside him. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the Little Rock Planning Commission and planning staff. Get out there. My name is Troy Lahey, and I'm vice president of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. At a meeting, first Monday in October, we discussed this item. And I had called the lady and invited her to our meeting, but she did not come. And we feel like in Southwest Little Rock that if they're not interested enough in their project to come and explain it to us, then we're going to be for denial. And that's what we're requesting on this item, that you deny this item. And thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Or would the applicant like to speak to what Mr. Lahey had to say?
Yes, I received a call from Mr., what was his name?
Troy Lahey.
And he invited me to a meeting, which I explained to him the reason why I couldn't make it. My daughter was having a surgery and she's still at the hospital. And I asked him if it was mandatory, he said no. So that's why I couldn't attend to the meeting.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners before we take a vote? Okay, I'm ready for a motion. Mr. Vickers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve item Z-9831, approval of the requested conditional use of permit, subject to compliance with the comments, conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and the staff analysis.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Hurson?
Yes.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, item number six is next on our agenda.
Item six, file number Z-9847. This is a rezoning from R2 to O3, located at 14115 Taylor Loop Road. The applicant proposes to rezone the 1.8-acre property located at 14115 Taylor Loop Road from R2 to O3 to allow for future office development. The property contains a one-story, single-family residence within the north portion of the property and a manufactured home at the southwest corner of the lot. The east half of the property is undeveloped and tree-covered. There are two driveways from Taylor Loop Road, which provide vehicle or access to the property. The general area contains a mixture of zoning and uses along Taylor Loop Road and Cantrell Road to the north. Office and commercial zone properties are located along Taylor Loop to the north and west. Single-family residences are located to the east and south and southwest. A mixture of commercial uses is located to the north at the Taylor Loop Road-Cantrell Road intersection. The city's future land use plan designates this property as T or Transition. The requested O3 zoning will not require an amendment to the future plan. Staff is supportive of the requested O3 rezoning. Staff views the request as reasonable. Office zoning is an acceptable zoning within the future land use plan designation of transition. Staff believes that the O3 zoning will have no adverse impact on the adjacent property and therefore recommends approval of the requested O3 rezoning.
Thank you very much. I assume we have the applicant at the podium?
Yes. I'm Claire Brown. I am the broker and the owner of Move Realty. The owners and sellers of this property have hired me to represent them. I'd like to defer my 20 minutes to the opposition, and I'll be back.
Thank you very much. We have two people who wish to speak in opposition. Mr. Tucker, Mr. or Ms. Tucker. Mr. Tucker?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Jabal Tucker. I live at 14209 Taylor Loop Road, just beside the building or the parcels that in questions. One of the things that I'm really against opposing is because, one, the letters that we are sending out, that they're supposed to send out, I did not receive one. That is not a good thing. I did not know anything about it unless that my neighbor says that, hey, do you know what is going on? So I have to hear from somebody. So that is not a good idea. And secondly, the area that we are living, this is a place that we are planning to be a retirement home. If we will start bringing business around that area, it's going to cause a lot of turmoil for some of us that will have sentimental values for where we are living. So we don't want to start having any businesses coming. We know, yes, there's 114109, which is towards Cantrell, and then the building is there. So once they allow you guys approve that, that means that my own house is just going to be in an open field for everyone's. And around the areas, it will cause a lot of crimes. We know. This is why we have to start inviting crimes. We're not going to be able to live in a peaceful life. So I will really kindly ask the commissions that this request should be denied. One, the letters that were sent out, they even put a zip code wrong that says 72211, which of course is supposed to be 7223. You know, as I'm the one in charge of that zip code, I work for United States Postal Service. I'm the station manager of all channels, and I live around that area. I love my communities, and that is where I want to retire. So I request kindly that you guys look into it for failing to produce informations to the right people, but they fail to do it. I yield my next, whatever time remain, then I will come back.
Excuse me, sir. Can you state your name for me again, please?
Jabal Tucker. Jabal Augustine Tucker.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Hart? Because the opposition brought up notice, I'd like to clear the record to ensure that proper notice was made.
I have a certified mail receipt that was postmarked on 9/26/2023. The final date to postmark these, I think it was the 28th. There is one for Mr. and Mrs. Tucker at a P.O. box 193702, Little Rock, Arkansas, 72219. The applicant, the gentleman was notified correctly. Notice went out correctly.
Well, that P.O. box is there. I don't go there, but my mailing address is 14209. You know, if you're going to send something somewhere, where the issue is, where we have to make sure we address. So if you send it to O9, you know, I don't go there normally to pick up mails. So where I want all my mails to come is my resident, and that is what I have in the city also. When the city, I changed my mailing address, 14209 Taylor Loop Road. So if they send it there, it means that nobody signed for it. It will be returned. I don't go there frequently. And secondly, in August, when the notice was sent, I was on vacation.
Chair, if I may, for clarification to the planning commission and anybody online or listening in and in the room. For public notification, the only notification for state law is we post it in a newspaper or circulation of prominence in the city of Little Rock, has to be done 15 days prior to the meeting. We do that in the daily record. So we have met state law. We do provide evidence of that in our office, and we have that. All other notifications are supplemental, even the posting of the property, in which the property was posted. For the mailings, we are bound that when we mail, we mail to the owner of the property as listed on the tax rolls for the county. We have to do that for any type of legal notification for the city. Because the owner of the property may not reside at that address. They may rent it, and we've had that before, that somebody rents the property, and they say they weren't notified. Well, the owner of the property was to whatever address is on file at the tax record or the assessor's office. If that is not kept up from, by the property owner, we would not know that. And again, if anybody is, you know, and I understand, and they may not be there when it comes in, but that is the procedure for notification that we follow. And we check that diligently, and ones that do not provide us with that notification prior to this meeting has to be deferred. It cannot be heard. So we're, as Mr. Thrower presented, we're able now. We've had it happen in the past. Some of the newer commissioners, we used to not be able to do that instantly and look on the files, so it was always a question at the commission. But we have it digital. We put it in the system, and we make sure that we have them properly notified. And we'll check it most definitely. Mr. Thrower checked it, and if there's an error, we'll bring it out and redo everything. But we do not believe it was an error at this time. We believe it is all notified properly.
Okay, thank you to staff for that, and thank you to our attorney for raising that point. I do have another card in opposition. Ms. Laura Brown?
Hello. My name is Laura Brown, and my husband and I live at 4818 Jerry Drive, and our, on a one-acre lot, and our backyard borders this property that's up for rezoning. When we got our letter, one of the first things that stuck out to us that was concerning was rezoning to the 0-3. In terms of the definition of what we could find, of what would that mean? Basically, what would be next to our backyard? This is a heavily wooded area. All of the homes, there's four homes that border that red box there. That it's, all of the homes, and like, Mr. Tucker lives directly behind me. Everyone who lives there, and these homes have been here for decades, we have a wooded area. So we have our privacy. So when we saw 0-3 and saw that it's for general office district for development of freestanding offices serving a broad range of public needs, that's the only definition I could find anywhere. Well, that could be just about anything. So that's concerning that what is a heavily wooded lot right now, potentially, and it's long and narrow, someone could come in and just flatten it, and I would have, you know, an asphalt parking lot next to my yard. We've lived in our homes since 1999, so we're very used to our privacy there. So that was one of our main concerns. And then also in terms of, you know, we understand that the owners are wanting to sell. We're not opposed to them selling their property, but it's just a matter of, you know, going from residential to, you know, straight business, and what would that mean? And I'm curious and wonder if there could be some sort of a compromise in terms of, you know, could that lot be divided into two or even three residential lots? That was done on Jerry, at the end of Jerry, closer to Cantrell many years ago. When we moved in, it was a single residential lot. And I think in 2014, they decided to sell the property, and the person that bought it, I believe was some sort of a builder, and got permission to separate that into two lots, and two new homes were built. That particular piece of property does back up to and is right beside another small business comparable to what's on Taylor Loop right now. On the, you know, next door to that lot is a small office, and I believe they do publishing or something, but, so it's low impact. But I guess because someone had said, well, it's because it's next door to a lot that's a business, it just makes sense to make it fully business. Well, if it couldn't be divided into multiple residential lots, perhaps it could be divided into commercial and residential. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, we were just trying to look at, you know, what could be a compromise. But at the very least, if it does get approved, is there any way that we could ensure there would be some sort of buffer for the four homes that border that lot to maintain our privacy? That's really our main concerns and why we are against it. Is there a way to compromise? We're not saying that families shouldn't be able to sell their property, but it should not be at the detriment of my property, a home I've lived in, you know, for 24 years, that it's heavily wooded and it's a beautiful backyard, to all of a sudden know that basically my backyard could be looking at a parking lot. And that's just, that's upsetting to think that could happen. And at the very least, if, you know, if you do approve it, then could there be something built in for some sort of a buffer of a, you know, a natural buffer, perhaps, privacy fence, something? Or is there a possibility that, you know, there could be some sort of a compromise for that piece of land?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. If the applicant will approach and, or the agent for the applicant, and you do not have to revisit the notification part, I think we've covered that. So if you'll address property concerns, please.
So the rezoning was applied for in order to make the property its highest and best use for sale. As you mentioned, there are three dwellings on the property. There's the original homestead, there is a mobile home, and there is a one-bedroom, open shanty, if you will. None of these properties are in good working order. In fact, the city has given multiple citations over the years and continue to do so even as the notice is placed on the property of a subject being rezoned. So in the sense of everybody's property needs to be increased in value, I'm certain of the fact that after selling real estate here in central Arkansas for 23 years, that anything constructed at this point would serve as a benefit to the residential properties that it backs up to. If a law firm, if a dental office, accounting office, whatever were constructed, which would need this zoning, then it would benefit those residents that it backs up to compared to what is currently there. I understand the need for privacy and desire for that, and maybe a neighborhood is not the best place for residents to live there if that's their desire, and I'm happy to help them move to. So the, yeah, it's my job. It's what I do. So, I mean, the thing is, is that, again, it's the highest and best use of the property. For their property, for the subject property, the highest and best usage of it all over. Everything is zoned commercial, surrounding it, across the street, around Cantrell. That's just the way it is. Anything that's going to be constructed there is going to increase the value. By zoning it commercial, it increases the value exponentially. Unfortunately, the width of the lot does not allow for it to be subdivided into residential lots. I don't know anything else that you would need or have questions about.
Okay, I think Monty had a comment.
Mr. Chair, with respect to one of the concerns that was brought up regarding buffers.
Yeah, yeah.
If this property were to be zoned O3 and developed for an office, the city zoning ordinance requires land use buffers where adjacent to single-family zoning or uses. So in this case, they would be required buffers along the west or east and south property lines where adjacent to residential. Those would have to be a minimum of 6% of the average width or depth of the lot, and at least 70% of the buffer area would have to be maintained as, with the vegetation that's there retained.
And also, if I may clarify to add additional to that, as a component of all land use buffer requirements, opaque screening, whether a fence or other device, minimum of six foot in height shall be required to be placed upon the property line side of the buffer. So it would be a fence and a buffer, or an opaque other device and a buffer.
Thank you for clarifying that. Questions from commissioners? Yes, sir.
What are the current plans to build on this property?
There are no current plans to build on it. So the property is not on the current market yet. It is listed, but it will be, the goal was to have it rezoned commercial, because that increases the value of the land. So the goal is to put it on the market and advertise it as commercial property, since that is the highest and best use of the land. And then if the property needs to be rezoned again for a potential buyer, whatever contract comes along will be contingent upon that. So there is no plan currently to build on the property. There is no business intent, nothing of that nature. This is truly to zone it for the highest and best use of the property, so this family can sell it. There are three family members living in this property right now.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Not with the crowd that we have here tonight. We're probably on track for a three-hour.
That would mean you're not in the circle.
So the notice requirements are, well, I'll let Mr. Collins go over that. Go over the notice requirements, please.
Monty, if you would please let everybody know the distance requirements?
The supplemental notice is required by the planning commission is two things. Posting of a sign on the property and also the certified mailouts of a notice form to all property owners within 200 feet. And then staff has gone an extra step, and we're notifying up to 300 feet.
300 feet.
My list was obtained from a local title company. It is not a list I got and did myself. And then it was sent out by a third party.
Okay, Mr. Vickers? Okay, Mr. Vickers, if you have a question?
I just want to clarify this for the record. So the applicant is not trying to develop this.
Correct.
And they are strictly rezoning the land to get a higher valuation for their property to sell.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The lady with the real estate just said she wanted it zoned C3.
Yeah, she's mentioned commercial a number of times, but the zoning on the table here is office, is 0-3. Sometimes people use that interchangeably, but it's office use not. We have a commercial designation in the city which allows for shopping centers and car washes.
Right, it's not that.
This is office use.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification, Paul. It's a good point.
I guess the compromise is, is that these owners are not requesting anything of that nature. There are lots of different zoning options that this could be requested and they're not.
Well, they've requested office.
Correct.
Then that's what we'll vote on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, correct. It's 0-3. If I'm reading that correctly. Any other commissioners? Yes, you may come back up if you have a, if you had a card.
Yes, I did. I'm Laura Brown. In terms of 0-3, what specifically could be built next to my home? You know, what kind of business? Could it be like, let's say if that, you know, in terms of, would it be like a single building? Could it be two-story, three-story? Could it be a strip center? You know, could it be, I need more specific information of what could be allowed in that?
There is, in the Little Rock zoning code, there is a list of uses for every classification, 0-1, 0-2, 0-3, C1, C2, C3.
I looked that up and I mean, I read the exact definition and there's nothing.
We can, I think staff can provide that to you.
Because would there be, oh, I'm sorry.
I was, Sean's wanting to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Overton.
I would refer you to Section 36-281. I don't know if you have a pen or not.
Yes.
I can get you one.
Say that again.
But 0-3 is general office district. It's in our zoning code and it will be Section 36-281. And it has about, well, it has a number of uses. I don't want to list them all, we'd be here all night. But then we also have accessory uses. So I would refer you to 36-281.
Okay. Because that was, you know, well, does that also include the size of the structure?
That would go towards preliminary plat and if this is just the zoning?
A zoning matter does not list the size of the structure. The size of the structure is determined based upon the size of the lot or the tract of land and what the building setbacks are. So you'll have a front building setback, a side building setback, and those are determined at the time of building application or building site plan review. And so if you have an office or any type of development, you also have to count for if parking is going to be required and then they will have setbacks accordingly, landscape buffer setback. So those scenarios based upon the, how the site is configured, literally uses up what could be a buildable square footage of a property. And so we don't, we do not set a minimum square footage in that area. We do for residential because we set a minimum lot for residential and we do set that for this one. We don't tell them this is your maximum square footage. They're allowed to build to building setback, to building setback accordingly, adhering to all buffers and regulations and also parking requirements for whatever use that they come in at, then we'll place that in. And then they'll have to have, adhere to fire prevention code for access, emergency access. So it's, at that time, it is a design and a presentation of what is the layout and that will set their building square footage.
And in terms of the number of businesses, would that be, fall under that same thing? Like, you know, a number of offices that could be allowed?
There's a minimum square footage that a individual can occupy an office and that could be one office there, one entity. Could be multiple entities. It falls back to, we look at when they occupy the building for certificate of occupancy and what that type of use is and how much is allowed.
I have more questions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, I understand that we want to do something, but she doesn't have the great ideas of what they really plans to put in this place. We don't want to live on fictions life, we want facts. If we says that we're going to go with these fictions ideas that she will, they will have something in mind to put there, what we approve these things, then later on, they start putting some things that is going to encroach or going to make us look like we are not important. Mind you, Taylor Loop Road is a very busy street. If they're going to put any businesses out there again, you know, you look opposite my own house, which, Worcester Street, it's very difficult that people come in and out, you know, for them to even take right or left on the street. Traffic is very treacherous out there and some of us coming home sometimes will be in line for so long. If we approve that thing, the land or the parcels, she doesn't know what it's going to be there for. Sometimes some other family members want to have a privacy. If that happened, if we want to sell our properties, well, guess what? It's going to be difficult to sell our properties because they feel that it's going to become as a zone. So we don't want those things. Yes, you might put your buffer, it's a great idea, but if we know exactly what you want to put in that place, then maybe we can see what we can do. But she doesn't have no idea. So do we go to live in a fiction life, then later on we approve, then later on they start building any things, we can able to fight it? This worries me, worries my family and I believe that it worries my community also. So there's some things that we have to do and find out a proper, what kind of object, it might be a tiny house, but if this property is already there, it's already, like she said, it's degrading our own properties, devalue our properties. If you believe that is the, let them remove those trailers that is there or let them build another house that will be resident, that will be much convenient for everyone. But putting a business is going to hinder our own. I don't think you will upgrade. It might value the property, but it would be very hard to sell unless we want to turn the whole Taylor Loop Road as a business street. If that's what is only planning to do, we need to know about that. But if we want to live there as a resident and people already want to live there, I have five more years to retire the postal service. That is the place I want to live. That's where I want to live the rest of my life. I'm 65. I don't want, when I retire 70, start going back to look for some other places. Okay? I don't want to go back to Africa. I want to live right there. And I believe that my community will love to live with me. And I believe that I've done a great impact in my community as a station manager, Chanel. And that is where I want to live. But I don't want any businesses will make me try to run away. In Massachusetts, before I transfer here, we have the same thing happen. I bought a house before I got transferred here. My house, I fixed everything, went up to half a million. They put business around there, everything collapsed. I end up only selling for $230,000. So I've already faced some things like this once before and I don't want to face this the second time. I believe in Arkansas, that's what they call it, Arkansas. Arkansas means the Ark of Covenant. They are God people here, they believe in us and they believe what they do. If we all start looking at the feeling of people, this country or this state will become a great city, a great state. Every state will try to come here, but let's observe what our people say. Money is not everything, it's about feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I'll open it up to any of the commissioners who might have a question for the applicant at this point.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to kind of go back to the opposition. So just to kind of help search what the possible options are for 0-3, I just wanted to kind of explain what I did to get to that list to kind of help with that. So I just put in my search bar, 0-3 Little Rock zoning, and then on the second line it says Muni Code Library, Chapter 36. I clicked on that and it took me right to it when I went to 36-281 as was explained by, I believe it was one of the staff members. So I just wanted to kind of point that out to kind of help the two in opposition to kind of see what all the options are for 0-3 and that's all I needed to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Any other questions or comments from our commissioners? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item Z-9847, the rezoning from R2 to 0-3.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Thrower, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
No.
Ains?
No.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Motion fails, did not obtain six votes.
Six yes votes. Motion fails. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is Item 7. Mr. Moore.
Item number seven, File Number Z9813. This is Lamarsh Place, PDR, 16800 Lamarsh Drive. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this 1.51 acre property into 14 lots for single-family residential development. The subdivision will take access from Lamarsh Drive. The development will include a new private street and will be completed in one phase. The applicant proposes to construct 14 two-story, single-family homes at a density of less than 12 units per acre. The density will be approximately nine units per acre. Access to each unit will be from private road extending from Lamarsh Drive. The applicant knows that the private drive will be built to city standards and conform to the necessary turnarounds for fire and sanitation. Currently, all of the lots will be owned or leased by the developer. However, each unit may be for sale in the future. Each unit will contain a one-car garage, 18-foot driveway, and a maximum building height of 35 feet. The applicant notes that the lots will be final platted at the same time, but the structures will be built four at a time. All building setbacks will be 15 feet, front setbacks will be 15 feet, rear setbacks of 10 feet and side setbacks of 5 feet. Open space tracks will serve access for utilities and drainage. The access easements, alleys, and common areas will be maintained by the property owners. Streets will be owned and maintained by POA. The applicant submitted a required documents from FEMA to fill all lots within the 100-year flood plane, to have a finished floor elevation at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Necessary approval from FEMA will be sought once work is completed and the plat for the subdivision has been filed. Staff is supportive of the requested PDR zoning to allow a single-family residential development called Lamarsh Place. Staff views the request as reasonable. The development represents the continuation of single-family PDR zoning and uses in the general area. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues and there are no variances requested. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F in the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report.
Thank you very much. We have the applicant, I assume, at the podium?
Yes, sir. Mark Redder with Holloway Engineering. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to mention a few things, but then I'll reserve my time. I believe that this development fits nicely with the transitional zoning shown on the land use map, future land use with the city of Little Rock. We know that this area of Cantrell is rapidly growing and has some growing pains, which is acknowledged by the residents and I appreciate their concern. But this is a very light duty use for this and I think, I believe it fits perfectly with the transitional zoning.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming you want to reserve the rest of your time until after.
Yes.
We have one card in opposition. Gene Pfeifer.
Is it the applicant?
I'm Gene Pfeifer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and city staff. I appreciate all that you do trying to assure orderly development of our city. I'd like to take just a moment to address the complaints from the back of the room on notice. I have twice been failed to be notified under the procedures that the city uses. In both cases, the abstract or title company failed to list my property when I was directly across Highway 10 from the rezoning. Highway 10 is not 200 feet wide. Those omissions never resulted in any sanction to those title companies for the omission nor an apology to me for the omission. The staff has simply said that they don't have the time or the inclination to check on what the title companies give them and that they are not responsible for checking the accuracy of that. So I would submit that something needs to be done because the city's procedure is woefully inadequate. And one thing I would think that would improve it is if the title companies had to submit a map, a map in addition to their list, showing on that map the 200-foot circle because then it might have jumped out to the staff that there were no notifications sent on the north side of Highway 10 in those two instances. But enough on that matter, I'm here to speak on Item 7. I'm the neighbor, I'm the neighbor immediately north of the subject property. This project has an overall density of nine units per acre. Single-family zoning in Little Rock tops out at six units per acre. This should be a multifamily application with all of the more stringent multifamily buffering, setback, and landscape requirements. Applicant has furnished an unsigned bill of assurance that does not meet your requirements. There is no provision for maintenance of the private drive or the landscaping on Lamarsh. The staff write-up says that there'll be a POA formed. The bill of assurance does not form a POA for the purpose of that maintenance. There is no control over the exterior elevations and no samples have been furnished to you otherwise, so you have no idea of the appearance of this project and its suitability and conformance to the neighborhood, which are part of your review process and which could be evidence in a properly drawn bill of assurance. The minimum-sized residential lot by zoning code is 4,000 square feet and in a typical residential subdivision is 5,000 square feet. The typical lot size in this proposed development is less than 2,200 square feet. Sidewalks should be required on both sides of a street across from a school, but there are none shown. Residents of this development will have to cross Lamarsh at mid-block to walk to school. This will create a traffic hazard on Lamarsh. The south radius of this new street is less than 10 feet, whereas your master street plan code requires a minimum of a 25-foot radius. Cars turning right into this project will have to slow to a crawl to make that turn. It's not a drive being used by only one house, which might be acceptable. It is a drive being used by 14 houses and that less than 10-foot radius is going to create a masma of traffic on Lamarsh. The subdivision code requires that all lots having frontage on a public street, the request that the proposed street be private is a variance request. The code also requires that all private streets be constructed to a public street standard. The minimum right-of-way width for such streets as the one proposed is 45 feet. The minimum right-of-way width for such streets as the one proposed is 45 feet. This plan shows only a 28.4-foot wide access easement. There is no common usable open space, and vehicular circulation will be a tangle. From your development criteria, I quote, "The planning commission shall determine that specific development features, including project density, building locations, common usable open space, the vehicular circulation system, parking areas, screening, and landscaping, and perimeter treatment shall be combined in such a way as to further the health, safety, amenity, and welfare of the community." You are not requiring that the letter of map revision be obtained before this plat is approved. Four out of the 14 structures on this project are shown to be in the floodplain. During periods of flooding, are there going to be four structures surrounded by water? Or are all of the streets and drives going to be raised above the flood elevation? You have no assurances. Since this is a multifamily project, and my property adjoining on the north is single-family, there should be use buffers. A 10-foot rear setback should require a waiver. These two-story units will loom over my property. The east one-third of the fill to accomplish this project will be 6 to 7 feet above my property, and such an embankment cannot be obtained in a 10-foot rear yard setback even with a 3-foot short retaining wall. Thank you for hearing my comments. I hope I've given you adequate reason to turn this project down as unsuitable for the area immediately across from our Don Roberts School and in a neighborhood that is surrounded by beautiful developments of gated or semi-gated residences of masonry construction with adequate landscaping.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. There's a lot to unpack there. Would the applicant like to come back up and speak to those concerns, please?
Sure, and I appreciate his concerns. A lot of the items mentioned are items of final design-type matter, and will have to conform to all of City of Little Rock's rules and regs if they apply in this case. I would argue perhaps that a lot of them don't, but that's a different matter. We realize that the entirety of the property, with the exception of the land and the floodway, will have to be raised above the 100-year flood. That's a requirement by the city, and we plan to do that. Other than that, like I say, most of the other items are final design-type things that we won't be able to build this unless it's approved by City of Little Rock. So those types of things are up to y'all.
Questions for Mr. Moore first?
One other point of clarification. This is a single-family residential development that is proposed. It is not multifamily. What is proposed are individual lots with one single-family home per lot. The density just happens to be a little more dense than you would normally see at six units per acre, and the reason, that's the reason it's here before you has a rezoning to planned development, because it is a little denser than your typical six units per acre.
That's correct. And a lot of the developments that we're seeing out in this area are POCs, PDRs, and you know, there's a lot happening out here. And, you know, it's quote-unquote progress. You know, a lot of people probably won't like the things that are happening, but that's the way development is going out in the side of town. So, you know, we're here to perhaps do it as tastefully as possible and with as little impact to the neighborhood as possible.
Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, it's not a question, it's kind of a comment. Immediately south of this, half a block or so, are about eight or 10 what look like row houses on Taylor Loop that have no landscaping on the Taylor Loop side, and they look like they were thrown up there. They're all the same, and this looks, just from looking at this plat or this map, or the drawing, it looks like all these are going to be just virtually the same. I can't find any real beauty in here, for what it's worth.
I had a question. Mr. Pfeifer raised an issue about the turn radius off LaMarche. So I see that LaMarche Place Drive is private, but LaMarche is a big, to his point, that turn radius is a little concerning, just because I do feel like as you're turning off LaMarche, especially if you're making a right-hand turn there onto LaMarche Place Drive, you would have to slow down significantly to make that turn. Any comments from staff on that, or does the fact that it's a private drive mean that it doesn't have to comply with street standards, or does it comply with street standards?
As far as the work in the right-of-way, it has to comply with City of Little Rock standards regardless of the zoning. What we look at is, at the time, if it's approved and they go through final development plans, we look at turning movements and radiuses for any deviation from what our standard widths or movements would be. So in regards to the radius off of LaMarche, it would have to adhere to city standards in the right-of-way, you know, for that. So it may modify the drive a little bit when they go in. We don't know yet. We don't have full sets of plans to look at and look at turning movements through there. Now, as far as the private drive, even all private drives has to be built to city standards if it's roadway. The planning commission has an authority to grant variances to that master street plan or the widths of the roadway as that is set. What we would look for is what type of service is happening on that roadway. So at any given point in time, if we, the city, picks the trash up, you know, does services or utilities, then we'd look for, can our vehicles get down the roadway, private or not? Depends on how we service it. We would also look at it from a fire truck, fire apparatus. Can a fire truck get through there? So it is regardless whether it is a public road or a private road, we look at the widths proposed, and we look at the service vehicles that are to be down it to see, can they access it and get back and do what they need to do for the service that the city provides? Does that help answer that?
It does. We're looking at PDR zoning here. So is the plat that we're looking at up on the screen, is this the final work, or is there more to be done to this? You're kind of implying that there's more to be done?
Yes. Once a plan is done, a planned development cannot go against what is set for the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code and access. So whereas even a planned development, if you approve it and you approve something that may be less than what is required by the fire marshal access, it's whatever the fire access road requirement is. What you're looking at is when you look at the setbacks, the building setbacks, those types of aspects that they brought out, that would be adhered to on a planned development. But all other stuff, as far as what we would deem access for services, they may be modified. Planned developments may be modified up to a certain percentage before it comes back to this planning commission for review, and it's 20%. And that varies for whatever it is. Once it gets into design, then staff looks at that for what that is and makes that determination.
That's correct, and that's why I mentioned earlier that, you know, this is all subject to staff review and acceptance of rules and regs with the city. You know, I'd like to say that this is conceptual in a way, but we understand that there might be modifications.
Mr. Chairman, another question, if you will. Did I understand that they only have a one-car garage?
Could you hear that, Mr. Rutter? Did they just have a one-car garage?
I did, and I don't remember, and I apologize because I actually am filling in for the project manager on this job, but I believe it was in the staff write-up of what it would be.
Mr. Chair, the staff write-up, using information from the applicant, it says one-car garages.
One-car garage, yes. Okay.
So my question, what are you going to do with a second car, if you have two people living there?
A lot of people don't utilize two cars.
Okay.
It's about that size, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I have two questions, one for the applicant and a clarification from staff. Are these going to be sold, or are they going to be rentals? Because it says in the write-up, 870 square feet per unit, which, so are they being sold as single-family houses, or are these going to be like a rental townhome-type thing?
I believe that's in the staff write-up also. I think it's either-or, if I recall right, Mr. Moore.
No, actually, it says they will be owned, nevermind, they'll be owned and leased by the developer, but may be sold in the future. So my other question, though, this is the staff. Mr. Pfeifer brought up that the normal requirement for lot size is 4,000 square feet, and saying that these were 2,200 square feet. Is that statement accurate? And if so, I'm kind of curious, the allowance for that large variance, or just kind of curious the logic behind that?
Well, that's the reason you're seeing this as a planned development and not a preliminary plat.
Okay.
Is because the developer is proposing something that doesn't necessarily conform to the typical ordinance standards. So that's why you're seeing it as you are, as a rezoning, and I don't know if those numbers are correct or not, but I think they're pretty close. Also, with respect to the parking, each house will have a driveway leading from the carport to the street, so there will be a driveway and a garage for each house.
Thank you.
And if I recall, that's an 18-foot drive, which would accommodate a couple cars.
Okay, additional questions? Okay.
Also, I would offer that the bill of assurance in the forming of the POA, obviously, will also go through modifications, and, you know, but it isn't typically something that the planning commission reviews as far as, you know, a bill of assurance. The only requirement is that we submit one, you know.
Commissioner Vickers, a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item Z-9813 for approval requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in Paragraphes D, E, and F, and subject to staff analysis.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
No.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Oh.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas absent. Vogel absent. Vickers?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Motion fails, did not obtain six votes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Item 8, which is Allen Mixed Use PCD?
That is correct. Item 8, File Number Z9839. This is the Allen Mixed Use PCD located at 2219 Wilson Road. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.32-acre property located at 2219 Wilson Road from R2 to PCD. The applicant proposes to use the property as a pottery studio, music studio, and urban garden site. There'll be no new buildings or building additions. Operating hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Once the building, the existing building is renovated, it will accommodate a maximum number of 10 students or clients at a time, and also the students will be able to display their work at an onsite gallery and sell it in an onsite gift shop. The applicant did provide a lot more specific information about the uses in your staff report. I won't go over all of that, but that's pretty much the highlight of the proposal. Parking will be in the front of the building and around both sides on concrete surfaces. The garden area will be on the north side of the building near the rear of the property. The property is located in an area containing R2 and R4 zoning. Staff does not support the requested PCD zoning request. Staff does not believe it's reasonable for this property, and the proposed use is too intense for this proposed location. The property is designated as residential low-density on the city's future land use plan and is bordered in all direction by single-family homes. Staff believes the introduction of this type of use will be out of character with the overall area at this time, and staff recommends denial of the PCD zoning request.
Thank you very much. Do we have the applicant at the podium?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
And you are?
I'm James Allen, Jr.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. We have one card in opposition. If you'd like to make a presentation prior to that, you're welcome to, or if you want to just wait and speak to the things that she brings up, you may do that as well.
Yes, I would like to speak to those things, but I was told that there were no cards in opposition.
We had one right at the end.
What's the end? Because I was told that there were none.
Marilyn Ewing?
Mm-hmm, and when was that turned in?
Had a card here that was handed to me. I don't exactly know when it was handed to me, but before the meeting started, so, yeah. Do you want to speak after her, or do you want to speak now, or both?
Well, I have a question, though. Did she meet the deadline?
Yes, she did meet the deadline, yes.
Okay, I'll let her speak. Thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't have the card here at the podium if she didn't meet the deadline, and we do have people that don't meet the deadline, so, okay, Ms. Ewing.
Hi, thank you for listening. My mom lives one street over on Nichols Drive from Wilson, and this is a mix of older homes and newer homes, and one thing we love is that they are building new homes and new condos in that area, and so it's really improving the area. The street, Wilson, where he is proposing to put the mixed media, is a garage right now, which was part of, I think, of the towing center that was there. The street is extremely narrow, no sidewalks, and a really sharp turn as you're going up to Good Shepherd. And so our concern is that this doesn't fit in with the neighborhood at all. It's starting to be vibrant, new homes in that area, and we just feel that having this type of mixed-media zoning there would not be in the best idea, the best prospect of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Al?
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. The proposal that I have before you is, it is for a mixed-media building. I received a grant through the Arkansas Community Foundation. It's, the grant was building better Black communities. My family, we own that building, and the usage will be to teach children from underserved areas, three, from three different genres that we, that people, children of color normally don't participate in. It would be pottery, urban farming, and classical music. In speaking with other people who are supportive of this, they think that this will be something that is good for the area. The reason that it would be a good thing for the area is because we're going to be teaching extreme education, which is science, technology, reading, engineering, art, and math. They would get all to be teaching extreme education, which is science, technology, reading, engineering, art, and math. They would get all of those things from these areas. One of our supporters is the mayor's office and his staff. They told me that these things are directly in line with things that we're trying to do in this state, things that they want to do. We, the grant was for $25,000. If this isn't approved, we will lose that money. It's enough money to purchase everything that we need. Also, when you speak of the parking and those types of things, the road is narrow, but the community parks on our property right now. We don't only own the building, we own the home to the left of it, we live in that home. We built the home, to the left, to the right of that home, someone bought it, we built a couple of other homes in the area. Now, when you move to the building, we own the lot next to the building, and we own the home that's next to that lot. So that entire area, we will man that area. The neighbors that she spoke of, they already park on our property anyway because we allowed them to. The previous property owner didn't allow it, they had to park on the street. So what we're attempting to do is to introduce these three genres to underserved children of color. Now, will it, will it disqualify children who aren't, white children? No. If you're from an underserved area, you will be able to use it. We aren't taking any pay, the teachers are paying, are going to be teaching for free. The gardeners are going to be teaching for free, the potters are going to be teaching for free, the music teachers are going to be teaching for free, and this isn't a big space, you can, you can fit it, you can fit it into this room. It's basically what a lot of people have. Some people have music studios where they teach these things to their community, some people have where they teach the gardening, and some people have where they teach the pottery. I'm just attempting to put all three of these things together so that children of color can learn them, because I've been doing this now maybe the last, I'd say, 20 years. And in these areas, I'm most of the time the only black person who's doing them. I started off at the Arkansas Art Center. I taught the children there. 99.99% of the children that I taught were not from underserved areas, and they were not black or Latino. The same thing is with the gardening that I've taught. I volunteered with Haver International for three years to learn how to garden. I've done two AmeriCorps service terms, and to ensure that I'm teaching these children to be leaders, the name of the, of the building would be called the Center for Heritage Leadership. We're teaching them how to become heritage leaders. And to ensure that I can teach them, I'm currently in a doctoral, doctoral program for heritage leadership. These children need to have something that I did not have as a child. I'm a product, product of an underserved area. I still live there, I live, I live on the Ash, I live next in the area where Kitchen Express is, in that part of West Little Rock. I intentionally moved back to my home in this area so that we can do these things. And I would hope that you all will support us in this, in this, in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I got a, I got a question here. You talked about the music, the music studio. Would that be, like, how many students would be in there with that noise? Would there be a noise issue?
No, it won't.
Out of the?
It'd be piano. I'd be, we have something what you call a square grand piano. It's, it's, it was, it was used before the piano that we use now. So they'll be learning how to play Baroque music on it, a form of classical music. And I'm part of the, of the Arkansas Symphony Orchestra Guild, and I'm co-director of the Stella Boyle Smith Competition. They're in support of it, and so we won't have, we won't have a hard time. What we need is to be able to move forward. We have engineers, we have construction workers, we have people who want to donate money. They're, they're chomping at the bit right now to help us, but we, until we have, until we know that this has been passed, we can't move forward. And then also, if it doesn't move forward, we have to give that $25,000 back, and that can help a lot of children who normally don't do the things that I'm trying to expose them to. And what led me to this is I became disabled in 2012. Before then, I was a licensed psychotherapist. I was working with this same population. But while working with this population, I was wondering, I know there has to be something else that I can, that I can teach them. And during this journey, is when I learned about pottery, the classical music and the farming. I made a lot of money as a psychotherapist, but I knew that I couldn't do it because I would have been taking advantage of this population with, with the pain that I was in. So I chose to step back because that population is already taken advantage of. And I tell people all the time that the best thing that happened to me was to become disabled because now, living with this disability, it allowed me to learn the things that I need, and I can apply them with my psychotherapist degree. I'm a psychotherapist and a licensed psychological examiner, so we would tie all of these things in together. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have a question. I applaud what you're doing, however, I need you to walk me through the parking situation a little bit. I'm looking at the map of this property, and if you're dealing with underserved families, there is a good chance you're going to have people who have to stay at this location while their child is doing whatever valuable skill they're learning. You said people are parking right now, are they parking on the grass-looking field along with the, the concrete driveway?
Yeah, all of that, all of that is, is actual parking, what you're looking at. And we also own the, the lot, the house that's next to it. There's also parking on the sides, on both sides, there are lots that we have. So right now, we, we need the approval so that we can move forward and build everything out. We can't move forward with the people who want to help us until we're approved.
You say build everything out, what are we talking about?
You know, the parking and all that stuff, we will have to make sure that there's adequate, there's already adequate parking space, but we're going, what we're proposing to do is to bring the building up to code so that it can actually be that center that we're speaking of. But we can't move forward and do any development without, without having it voted on. There's ample parking space there. It's not going to be 20, 30, 40, 50 people there at a time, no.
So, by how many?
No, no less, no more than 10.
10, well, because right now, it looks like, it looks like people are going to be parking right behind each other.
Where, no, but if you look at it, yes, see, that's the parking right there. We own all of that, from the, that's all of our park, we own from that red house to the next house. So there's ample parking space for what we need to do, because there's parking on the sides of both also, there's parking.
I just, I got a question more for the staff. This was your recommendation for denial on this particular one, did parking have a big issue to do with that?
No, it was primarily the use. I mean, this, this is a pretty intense use for a single-family area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So can I ask a question? What is, what is meant by intense? Because we, I've, I've been speaking with you all for quite some time, and this is the first time that I heard anything about this being intense. Whenever we spoke, we walked through the steps, I was told this looks good, turn it in. I didn't hear anything about this being intense until yesterday, the day before yesterday, I believe. I was never told that this, this is too intense for what you're doing. This is the first time I've heard anything about this being too intense, but what is the meaning of intense when you're, when you're trying to expose children to these things that, and the opportunities that they can have? They will be able to get scholarships in these areas, they will be able to possibly start their own pottery studios, they will also learn how to do farming, things that, that people from these underserved areas normally don't, aren't able to do.
I understand. This, again, I want to direct this to the staff. If this was something that he can outline and maybe get a better usage, is something that he could come back to at the next meeting, if possible, without having to go through the re-channel or going through the process again?
Well, I mean, we could, I mean, he could meet with our department director and staff to discuss it further. Typically, when we have applications, we guide applicants through the process. We don't discuss staff recommendation.
Right.
During, during the process, because it goes through a review process, and it ends up, right before it comes to you guys as an agenda, that's when the staff recommendations are formulated. It's not at the beginning when we talk to an applicant.
No, because it seems to me he has a lot of great ideas and things, and he asked the grant, and he said he may lose it. I mean, and obviously, there are some, some opposition, but if there's a confined usage, I'm just thinking maybe the staff would maybe have a reconsideration of his proposal.
The recommendation of denial was based upon, when we talk about the intensity, you really need to look at the entire subdivision. That subdivision was planted as single-family residential lots back before it even coming to the city. You know, so it got annexed into the city, and the roads are substandard. There is, there has been some road winding in the area, primarily where there's been duplexes put in. And, and we actually did a study, I don't know, maybe three years ago regarding duplexes. And if you kind of look at the zoning map, there's R4 just directly to the west, across Wilson Road, and then on Perry Street on the next one. And at the time, we believed, staff believed, that there needed to be some redevelopment in the area. And we thought that that redevelopment to a duplex standard to kind of start, there was a lot of vacant lots, there were some homes that needed to be repaired in the area, could start revitalizing the area, and we saw that. We saw revitalization, we saw other, just single-family homes being built in the area, so. But was it enough duplex development and intensity of development happening there that we felt the need that it needed to kind of start being single-family residential again? And, and that's what we're in right now. So we met with the developers that were doing the duplexes at that time, and we said, hey, listen, you know, we believe that we've started to saturate the area, we did not want this to be, to double, you know, the population in the area because of the substandard roads, and there are. And so when we looked at this, that's what we looked at. We looked at what is proposed to be brought in as far as intensity. We understand what he's proposing for the pottery, the gardening, and the music, but it's the number. And, and the music really has a concern to us because there's, there wasn't really locked-in timeframes, you know, because if you're going to do the children and the music, you're going to have to provide certain timeframes for them on there. And that's not necessarily in there for every hour of every day, and the parking is an issue. The parking on the roadway, there's sections that it's not wide enough. This section might be wide enough to park on one side of the road and allow one to pass, but this development proposed, if you look at it, is going to the end of Wilson Road. So it's within the subdivision itself, it's not on a periphery, it's not off a junior deputy, it's not on a main road, it's in Wilson, off of Wilson Road. And so we felt that, you know, this would be too intense for that. So we would look for, to garner staff support, we would look for a lessening of that use, the number of students. You know, the, the pause didn't, I didn't get a pause when we looked at it for the pottery, you know, or a pause necessarily for the gardening, you know, for it. Those are outdoor, I think that's good. One of the main pauses that we had was for the music that's going to be there. Not necessarily, we don't look at type of music, we just look that it's a, you know, that's what's going to be, you know, taught there. And it is that compatible, and then the number. So I think that is what we would look for in tents. We'd look for a lessening of that mixed use, and we'd also look for, you know, the lessening of the students that would be there and accommodating and a physical requirement that it cannot utilize Wilson Road. I mean, that's another aspect of it.
Thank you very much, Amy. No, I think it's a great idea with the children, it's always in support, and I think anybody would be objective to, you know, having children, definitely underserved children, to get these things. I was just thinking if, if some way maybe that he can, the applicant would like to maybe try to defer without going through the process, and I'm not sure if he can, to try to fine-tune things like that, maybe to the next meeting, because as of right now, I understand what you're saying, it, it gets difficult when we don't know the hours of operation, we don't understand.
Those things, those things were in the application. They are, they were in there, and the, when, when he's speaking about the parking, the only reason the parking isn't out of control in front of that area is because the duplex, the people, the people who live in the duplexes park on our property. They're using our property right now. So there's room for, for the cars that we're talking about who, who, who will park there. This is not some, someplace where, where, where children and people are going to be out partying and those types of things. We're there to serve this population. It's always going to be someone there in our family because we live next door to it. We own the brown houses next to it. Everything is, is within the area. And if, with deferring, the reason it's taken us so long to start now is because of COVID that placed us back, that placed us beyond, behind the eight ball. If it's turned down, we lose this $25,000, and we lose an opportunity to expose these children to things that we normally don't, they normally don't get to see.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
So again, like my colleagues are saying, love the idea of what you're doing. Two questions. One, is there going to be any new construction of buildings or using the existing buildings?
We're using, is exorbitant buildings out of there.
You, you've mentioned a couple of times about losing the grant. Our lawyer may tell me I can't ask this, but when does that date happen?
Now, it's now.
Well, because again, to my colleague's statement, I think, I don't think this is an unsolvable situation, but I do think it needs some things to, because I think staff's concerns are valid, and I think it just needs a few tweaks to get there, so I'm not sure what our next step is.
I agree with you, Commissioner Brown. I mean, I like the idea, I think, like the concept. I just, I would feel comfortable of approving this with conditions. The recommendations about the staff primarily, as was stated earlier. And I don't know, staff, if that could be done, approval, maybe what I recommend, or hypothetically, if it's approved with conditions, if those conditions are not met, then it can be rescinded or?
And I understand the situation, and I understand with the grant deadline, that the issue of the grant deadline is outside of the purview of the commission, but they certainly are sympathetic. When you say now, does that mean if you deferred so that we could look at some of these issues, would you, would you lose the grant?
Yes, I would. COVID, COVID slowed us down, this would have, it would have, it would have already have started, and so that's what happened.
So deferring would not be something that you would be able to do?
No, it, no, it won't.
Okay, and then the question you had in regards to the conditions, if we substantially amend the application and start adding conditions, we basically change the application, and so I don't know what conditions that the commission may want to recommend, but if they're really substantial, then we basically change the application, and then that might change the public's desire to either speak for it or against it. And then we get into issues regarding due process. But if there are conditions that are minor, and the applicant is willing to consider them at the podium, then certainly that's something that we can do because we've allowed it in the past. So I guess if you have some conditions that you would want to propose to the applicant, then I think that's fair.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir. Yeah, it was minor conditions, things like hours of operations, which I think that obviously the community would want to know, especially if you're doing any type of, not seriously, not quote-unquote business, but I think- if you're doing any type of necessarily not quote unquote business, but I think people would have an honor of hours of operation. Number two, you said parking. I think it has to be something that you need to do on your end.
Yes, sir.
If you have parking, you can't let other people park there because you didn't utilize that space and can't have other people parking on the streets.
Yes, sir.
The third option was, you know, music, the, any kind of noise indications that could hinder the community or anything like that. I think that needs to be addressed and laid out. Hey, the noises, you know, if, if there is any type of noise, it would be from the hours of 11 to 1:00 or something like that.
Yes, sir.
I think those need to be outlined. And that's something that I would feel comfortable with.
Yes, we can do that.
If I'm, if I may, Chair and the Commission, I wanted to clarify the statement that the applicant did present a time when I said it would need to be narrowed down and more dialed in. That's exactly what I was meaning when you brought it in. The, the timeframe from a 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM for any use, really, that's what I said gives me pause. I wanted to clarify that not for the applicant but for the, the commission because you're in a neighborhood that if the normal operation of the people living there, they're coming home at 5:00 o'clock, you, do you have hours there that any of those uses can be done at that time? So that's what I mean, what I meant by when I said, you know, a dialing in or of the use. What is, when are you going to have for teaching, you know, I'm assuming you're not going to be outside at night teaching gardening at 9:00 PM. You, you might, I don't know. But, but that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking at. If you're going to be providing classes, when each of those to be provided and how is that going to affect the neighborhood? That, that's the point that I was making as far as being more specific of that timeframe.
Yeah, this is, it, it sounds like what we're trying to get to is just regular conventional business hours. The after-hours thing is the part that, as I was just sitting here thinking about, well, first of all, this use in a residential neighborhood is, is a stretch anyway. There, there are a lot of nice new homes around. So most of us who live in single-family detached residential neighborhood would not want any type of school immediately across the street or next door. However, when you say 9 to 9:00, Jamie, that, that is, it takes on a whole new face at that point. So.
Yes, sir, I understand. But 9 to 9:00 was.
I think an amendment to just typical regular business hours, I mean, that, that doesn't change the, would that material?
What, what are regular, so you have to remember, see, a lot, a lot of the kids don't get out of school. They're still in school during those times.
Yeah.
And when you say 9 to 9:00, you know, we have to have time to, you know, to clean up in the evening and make sure everything is tidied up for the next day. It's, we're not going to be outside and just keeping up noise or outside in the streets. We're trying to, we, our goal and our aim is to have this center so that we can keep the children off the streets. So it's not going to be anything that's loud and rowdy. We live next door to it. There's going to always be man. No one is going to be there without.
Do you, do you want us to just vote on it as, as it's presented? Is that what you would prefer?
Yes, sir, because I don't, this is.
Okay, okay. All right. That, that makes sense. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, move item Z-9839, Allen McShust, PCD. Excuse me. With the conditions, I would like to, for the record, make, I'm sorry, Monty, go ahead. Yeah, I want to make a condition that, that with the, I guess agreement with the staff as well as with the commission, that things being put into place with, you need to give the, the staff your hours of operations. And you need to have, for the record stating that you're parking, that you will fulfill that and making sure that nobody else is taking your parking spots on that. And then also about the, you know, you given for the record, the music and any kind of noise, make sure those are not in violation.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Except recommendation of denial.
Except for a recommendation of denial.
All right.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm a little confused. Are we adding these conditions? Or are we voting on it as is and suggesting that the applicant get what happened ironies out?
Mr. Vickers did add conditions on that motion. I was, I think where I was headed was, was based on your comment is we would just vote on it as is without restricting, without restricting you. So, so what, what do you want us to, what would you like us to do? Do you want us to restrict this motion tonight? Or do you want us to vote on it as you, as presented right now as it sits on this paper?
I would like to vote.
Okay, as it sits without any restrictions on hours?
No, no, we can, we can add those restrictions, yes.
Okay, all right.
So the motion on the table stands.
Okay, all right. So, so Monty, do you have a clear indication of what that motion was?
Well, they were, they were a little, I mean, some of that's a little.
It's a little vague, yeah.
If you will.
I guess the motion. I think I know what Chairman Vickers was talking about. The, the hours was presented 9:00 to 9:00 PM and that stands. I think he was requesting clarification on what times of day do they, are going to have those, which can be presented to us for each of the uses, like the pottery and the stuff, when they're going to have the classes. So the 9 to 9:00 stands. He talked about the parking. So he wants to see, and we would require that anyway, where they're going to be parking on site, how they're going to accommodate because the concern is utilizing and backing up on the roadway. So I think that, that can be during our site plan review accommodated. The last one was is that if, he just made it, it's more of an emphasis, it would fall underneath the nuisance codes that since music is the one being taught, that he wanted just an acknowledgement and from the applicant that they will adhere to all of those. And he did acknowledge it for our nuisance or that any of that music, whatever being taught, would not impact the adjacent properties. And I think that was the conditions that was placed.
I, I got a quick question before we vote. I, I got a quick question before we vote. Will, will the, will the rooms be soundproof that they'll be doing music in? That's, that's a question for the applicant.
Yes, they will. It'll be soundproof.
Is there any way we can, we can put that in as a requirement too that, that it is soundproof?
Yes.
Okay.
If it hadn't been seconded, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Thrower.
Yes, sir.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Lacher?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Thomas?
Vogel?
Hart?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with the conditions set forth.
Did you skip Vickers?
Sears.
Sorry, I did.
He's the man who made the motion.
For the record, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the board and thank you to the commission.
Okay, number nine, item number nine, Mr. Moore.
Item number nine, file number Z-9846. This is Higgins After School Tutoring PDO located at 5008 West 24th Street. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.2 acre property from R3 to PDO to allow for an after-school tutoring program. Level the score will provide literacy, math, and comprehensive support to students in grades K through 12 within Plaskett County. The property contains an existing 1,232 square foot, one-story, single-family residence. A concrete drive extends from West 24th Street to a covered carport along the east property line. Current Conway Park is located on the, to the south of the site. Properties to the northeast and west contain R3 zoning and uses. Operating hours will be Monday through Friday, 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM during the school year and 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM during the summer months. The applicant notes a maximum number of 25 students will be present at any given time, and the after-school program will employ between two and four people. The applicant provided a parking plan to staff which includes 10 parking spaces at 5008 West 24th Street and 10 parking spaces at 5,000 West 24th Street, which is owned by the applicant's mother. Ms. Margaret Higgins provided a letter of support for the program and use of the adjacent driveway to accommodate additional parking spaces for, for the, for the use. On-street parking is allowed along West 24th Street. Generally, staff does not support the parking as proposed, specifically the use of the adjacent property, which is not part of this overall plan and development proposal. Although the shared parking agreement was provided, staff feels the parking plan is not sufficient to serve the use. The existing driveway at 5,008 West 24th Street will not allow for the parking of 10 vehicles, and the property at 5,000 West 24th Street is not zoned property to allow parking for the proposed use on this adjacent property. Staff does not support the requested PDO zoning. Staff feels that 25 students at any given time is too intense for a single-family residence of just over 1,200 square feet in area. Although a shared parking agreement was provided, staff feels the necessary parking required for the potential volume of students is insufficient and will be out of character with single-family uses along West 24th Street. Additionally, the property at 5,000 West 24th is not zoned to allow parking for this use. Staff feels the after-school program will be out of character with the properties in the general area and has a potential to generate a significant amount of traffic, which would be adverse to the surrounding properties. As such, staff recommends denial of the requested PDO zoning.
Okay, we have the applicant at the podium. State your name, please.
Melissa Higgins.
Can you pull that mic down just a little bit, Ms. Higgins? Thank you very much.
Melissa Higgins.
Okay, I have two cards in opposition for number nine. And you can speak prior to the opposition, just like we've been doing, or, or you can wait to hear from them and then respond to their concerns.
I would speak prior to.
Okay, go ahead. You said you speak prior to them?
I want to reserve my time.
Oh, reserve your time. Okay. All right. I have Lisa Kirk.
Hello, I'm Lisa Kirk. I am the daughter of Margaret Higgins, which is the mother of Terry Higgins and Melissa Higgins, the daughter-in-law. And she opposed the business being next door to her. She's lived at the residence for 46 years. She moved there. She had wonderful neighbors. And they passed. And the children came to my mother and they asked if she knew someone that she would want for neighbors. And she says, sure, my son, Terry and Melissa. And so they moved there and she was happy to have them there. Now, they want, they moved away to another area on Bingham Road. They moved to another area. And now they want to make this a business. And my mother opposes it. She's 87 years old. When she first heard that that's what they wanted to do, she became nervous. She lives alone. Well, my niece just moved in three weeks ago. Other than that, she lives alone. I'm concerned also with the business being next door to my mother. And I oppose it also.
And I have a card here from Margaret Higgins, but are you speaking on her behalf or does she wish to speak?
She can speak.
Okay, Ms. Higgins?
Good evening. I oppose it because of, I've been living there real comfortable. It's nice and quiet. And now I am older. And it's just, I just want to still be comfortable. I don't, I know it's going to be noise. With kids, our school is noise. And I'm, I'm wanting to be comfortable there in my late years.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Higgins, would you like to come back up and, and address those concerns?
I would like to apologize and withdraw mine. And I am so embarrassed because I see my in-laws quite often. And I wish they would have had a conversation with me. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 12 is next on our.
Chair, do we need an actual motion on that or can we just move on?
I think that's a withdrawal. That's a withdrawal. Yeah, we don't, we don't need a motion on that one.
It is acknowledged withdrawal on record.
Yes, okay. Good luck to the Higgins family. Thanksgiving's coming up. All right, item number 12, Mr. Moore. And thank you all for your patience, by the way. We are getting through these as quickly as we can. There, some of these are just, there's no way to, you just can't speed through them, so.
Items, I believe items, all the rest of the items are short-term rental requests, items 12 through 19. In your staff report, we did put the same statement regarding STRs on every staff report. Let me just read that for the record one time, and then we'll get into the, to the individual requests. Currently, the City of Little Rock Department of Planning and Development has 23 short-term rentals, either STR1s and STR2s combined, listed within our database for the approved short-term rentals in the City of Little Rock. The city's new short-term rental ordinance allows a maximum of 500 short-term rentals within the corporate boundary of Little Rock. So that's where we stand right now. We have about six pending before the Board of Directors. And I think we may have a few pending administrative review as well. So those are the numbers as, as they stand today. And item 12, this is file number Z-9826, Mindful Properties 1 STR2 PDC located at 102 Rice Street. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.15 acre property located at 102 Rice Street from R3 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental, too, with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside at the residence and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property contains an existing wood frame structure access to is provided from a concrete stairway which leads from Rice Street and allows entrance to the unit. The unit has an alleyway parking with a carport. The property is primarily surrounded by R4 uses and zoning. The future land use plan shows a large area of residential low density in all directions. On June 20th, 2023, the City Board of Directors passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals within the City of Little Rock. The new ordinance established development standards for short-term rentals. And if approved, the applicant must comply with the newly established development standards that are listed in your staff report in addition to other requirements of the new ordinance. Staff is, staff is in support of the requested PDC zoning. Staff believes the request is reasonable and the proposed STR2 use is appropriate for this location. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the commenting conditions outlined in paragraph three in the staff announces of the agenda staff report.
Okay, thank you for the reading. Commissioner Haynes, are you still with us? Marlon, you still with us?
Hi, I'm still with you.
Can you stay with us through this vote or do you need to go?
I'm, I, I'll hang in there.
All right, hang in there through this, this particular vote. Okay, guys, we, we just learned that Commissioner Haynes is going to need to drop off after this vote. So what that will mean for the rest of you here who have a proposed short-term rental before us is that we will be down to six commissioners. And at that point, we still have a quorum. But remember, six yes votes are required to pass. Okay? So while we're hearing this particular item, you, you may want to think about whether or not you need to defer or you need to be heard tonight. But you, all six votes will be required to pass your short-term rental. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
If we defer, can we be one of the first ones for the next meeting?
We can do that, yes.
Because we have a lot of people here and a good 10 have had to leave because of health concerns mainly. They're just too old to be sitting down for that long.
Yeah, I understand.
So, yes. You don't want to? You want to keep going? Okay, we want to keep going. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we just had the reading on item number 12. So, and Mr. Haynes is going to stay with us through item number 12. So I would call up the applicant for item number 12.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marcus Arnold. This is my wife, Michelle Arnold. We are the owners of Mindful. We are the owners of Mindful Properties and 102 Rice Street.
Okay, great. I've got three cards in opposition, and so do you want to defer and just speak after they've spoken?
Yes, I will defer.
Okay, that would be great. I have Scott Jones. And I would remind the opposition, in total, you have 20 minutes, and we won't need to use all that 20 minutes, but that gives you six and a half minutes apiece or so.
I'll try to keep it brief. My name is Scott Jones. I'm at the address 111, so Catty Corner, from the 102. And I'm in oppose, basically because neighborhoods are made up of neighbors, and a short-term rental is by definition, you know, you can't develop that relationship, so. And on the second part, the individual owner has not been able to maintain that residence. They've had some unfortunate incidences, but they have not been able to rectify it. They've had a retaining wall that's gone down, that they have not made any arrangements to fix, and a root ball that's sitting precarious over the top because it is on the hillside, which is in danger, is all the cars parked along there. That's basically it. I'll pass it over. So those are my two big concerns on that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I cannot read the first name, the last name is Wilcox.
Good day, how good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
What's your first name, dear?
It's Lisa.
Lisa, Lisa Wilcox.
I'm from Africa too, so, Africa. So I actually live right next door to 102, I'm on 110 Rice Street, so I'm the third house. So our biggest problem, of course, is the road is extremely narrow. It is a one-way. Quite often, we get people coming up the wrong way to try to exit Markham, which is really impossible. The other problem we have, of course, I have been in contact with them for five months trying to get them, as you can see, the big tree by the blue trash can, nope, back that way, had fallen over. I had got the insurance company to come and remove it, which they did, but the stump was still left. And I offered to pay half to get the stump removed, and they didn't want to do that. The whole retaining wall there is gone, my stairs are gone, and you just, you should be afraid of your life just going to your trash can because it is really, really dangerous. Anyway, so they're just not maintaining, that's the one problem. The other problem is, of course, there's no parking in the back. There's two parking spots, as you said, and a carport, which is in the alley. On the front of that house, there is literally, there's maybe two car spaces. The problem is across from it, it has apartments as well as on the corner. So you have large amount, the first corner house has got two apartments. The next house over's got three apartments right across from their house, and that is definitely a problem. The other thing is trash, you know, of course, partying and things to that nature, which, I mean, we also bought the house because we love it, we love the neighborhood. Of course, we have really good friends, as you can guess. Anyway, so I do oppose it, please, thank you.
Thank you. Karen Tackett?
Karen Tackett, and I live at 103 Thayer, and I oppose basically because of the parking. As it's been said, Rice is a one-way street on that block, and as one of the commissioners said, it's hard sometimes to get city services down that street with all the trash cans that are left out. I live directly behind it, the back of my house and the back of that house is in the alley. I park in the back because I don't have parking in the front. I have had problems in the past with people, the renters at that apartment, at that house. They park, there's two parking spots in the back, but they will park two cars and then park several cars behind them. I've been blocked in, could not get out. Also, another thing, I'm kind of like my neighborhood watch. And with a rental like that, you never know who's coming and going. Are they supposed to be there, are they not supposed to be there? And I guess a question I would have is, how many people do they say could sleep at this property as a rental for VRBO or Airbnb? I definitely oppose it, though, because of the parking situation and just the traffic in and out as to where, we would never know who's supposed to be there and who is not supposed to be there. But I would like to know what they have, because I think I heard you all say it's going to be like a one residence, it's just going to be like a single property, a single-family property for rental.
Yeah, they'll speak to that when they come back up.
Okay, and I'd like to know how many it's supposed to sleep. Thank you.
All right, if the applicants want to come back up and if you want to address those concerns.
I'm Michelle Arnold, as he said, owner of Mindful Properties. This property we purchased several months ago. We have not started construction on it because of the issues with the retaining wall. We have been trying to go through the city properly with an engineer to get the retaining wall issue resolved. So we have a contractor that is working on this, who's in lockstep with the city engineer. And as soon as they come to an agreement on how they want the retaining wall addressed and fixed, that's whenever we'll start that process of fixing that. I would have liked to have had it addressed already, but it's, like you guys, as you might know, it's a process because it has to be approved by the city's engineer. I don't know if any of you guys want to speak to that process, but that's kind of where I'm at right now with the retaining wall. But we do intend to have it fixed as soon as the city approves it. As far as the amount of people, oh, for the other issue that came up that we were going to address is partying, I guess, came up, which, to be fair, could be an issue with just a regular residence as well as a short-term rental or a long-term rental, but we have a strict no-party policy. So also Airbnb and VRBO will even turn down potential party risks based off of history. We can vet who stays at the property based on previous reviews. So we have a strict policy because we want to keep up with the property and maintain it. We want to help to make the neighborhood nice. This is going to be a very nice remodel, so once it's complete, it'll be maintained properly, but that process has not been started yet. As far as how many people are going to be staying there, that also depends on when we're complete with the construction. So as of right now, it has four bedrooms. I'm not sure how it was rented in the past, but upstairs, there's a kitchenette and a living area, so it almost seems like they were renting it out to two families. That's not how it's going to be now. So basically, it will be four bedrooms, two bathrooms. So if you think about, if there's one bed per room, that's potentially eight to 10 guests max. Same with this and our other property. When we make the reservation, there's going to be a maximum amount of cars allowed based off of the amount of parking that we have. So as they've stated, they've already had parking issues, so whether you have a short-term rental or a long-term rental, or somebody just living at the residence, you can have parking issues. But with this, we can guarantee that we'll have, I guess, rules in place, and it'll be vetted prior to somebody staying there, that they can only have a certain amount of cars. And from what I can see, that would be three cars. There's two parking spots in the back, and there's one in the front. And I think, were there any other questions?
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
I have two.
Okay.
You said that the owner does not live there. Where does the owner live?
The owner? We're the owners of the home, we live in Conway.
The second question is, how are you going to guarantee, if you're in Conway, that there's no more than three cars?
We'll have cameras at the property.
And them?
I mean, and with Airbnb or us, period, like, if rules are broken, then it's simple to kick guests out.
It's the same as if somebody lived there and they used parking improperly. You can have the car removed, and in this case, it would be at the guest's expense. You can call the city, or you can call us. I mean, it's something that you can't guarantee, whether it's a long-term rental, short-term, or somebody living there as their permanent residence. So, I mean, we're going to do the, I'm sorry.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, you were up earlier, you certainly may come back up to the podium and counterpoint. I just had a few questions. So if it's 10 people, how are they going to get 10 people three cars? I mean, it just doesn't make sense, first of all. Second of all, the line of death goes right across the street. Are they going to screen for pedophilia? I mean, I'm just curious as to where this is going. If you have people moving in and out every 28 days, who's going to pick up all that trash from people coming in and out? We don't have the facility for that. When you turn off Markham onto Rice, it is the sharpest corner you've ever made. People get so mad because behind you, you have to slow down to a crawl. It is definitely not set up for anything like this. And the other thing is, why do you have to keep property and remodel it before you start maintaining it? Why do we have to look at grass that's this high for months at a time, and then they're going to remodel it and all of a sudden then start maintaining it? It's just not, for me, my house is an investment, my community is investment. This is not benefiting my community or the street, or the neighborhood in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the applicants want to speak to that? You don't have to, but we...
If you want us to address any of that, we can, but I don't feel like we...
We have any additional questions from planning commission members? Let's have a motion and go ahead and vote on this.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve item Z-9826, approval of the PDC zoning request, subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E in the staff analysis.
If a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so roll call vote?
Brown? Yes. Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yeah.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Thomas?
Absent.
Vogel?
Absent.
Vickers?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, the motion fails, only five votes.
Five to two, four vote, but the motion fails because you have to have six votes per our bylaws. So you, all of these, well, many of these end up before the city board anyway, so you do have the option to appeal, and all of you will have the option to appeal, win, lose, or draw on that. But tonight, as a result of a 5-2 vote, the item fails. Okay, Mr. Haynes, are you dropping off? Okay, all right, so, guys, I want to let you know, we are down to, we're down to six planning commission members. So, and that is, part of that is, we just, people are just absent at times, and then the other part of that is, we normally, we're supposed to have 11 commissioners, and because of some turnover on our planning commission, we have a couple of spots that are unfilled. So even if we have a full house, we're down to nine. So I want to reiterate that again before we move on in the, move on in the agenda. So we're down to item number 13, and all these, by the way, will be short-term rentals. You know, I'm tempted at this point, Jamie, to have you give a little synopsis of what, of the ordinance that the city board recently passed relative to short-term rentals, just because everything left on our agenda is short-term rental. Would that be appropriate, or maybe our attorney could do that? This was recently addressed with an ordinance, so, by the board.
And essentially what it is, you've got two types of short-term rentals, owner occupied and non-owner occupied. And there's a distance requirement, money is at 1,500 feet.
For an STR1?
Yeah, for STR1. So you can live at the residence, or within 1,500 feet of that, but they all have to be, have a business license, they all have to be regulated as far as inspection, so once approved, they would have to obtain a business license, and then we would have to go inspect the property. And then there are several development standards that they'd have to adhere to, and that is in your write-up for that, so like a parking plan, so anybody that's in opposition to it, that parking plan of how they would accommodate whatever vehicles they would have. They would also have to provide a floor plan, because what we're looking for is like smoke detectors, those types of things, how somebody's going to get out in an emergency situation. All sleeping areas will have to have two ways of egress, so like if you had them and you're just trying to have it in a basement with windows that ain't big enough for, to count, then people can't stay in the basement for it. So there has to be two means of egress on there. Insurance, a million dollars per occurrence, now, some of that is covered underneath a company you might be renting with, like Airbnb, part of that, but if they don't, then you have to come up with that. A big thing is the ABC-type fire extinguisher. That does have to be certified, the Fire Marshal is requiring that, in other words, you just can't go down to your local Lowe's or Home Depot and buy that extinguisher. It will need to be from a company that inspects it and certifies on a periodic basis to do No RVs, recreational vehicles, buses, trailers, should be visible from the street aspect, so that's part of that parking plan. And so those are just some of the criteria that's on there. And then we will, we are the entity that enforces that. They're going to have to have a notification if something goes wrong, that they can be called, and they have to respond. And then if there's so many of those in a year, then they are subject to removal of their short-term rental business license and zoning. And that's why it's tied to the property owner of that, either as a special use permit or as a planned development. So it does not transfer to a separate owner. So whoever applies, and they sell the property next year, that new owner is not entitled to operate as a short-term rental, they will have to come through the process again.
Is there a, is there a max number of short-term rentals in the City of Little Rock that once reached, no more are allowed?
Yes, that is 500. And as within the city limits, we do not include capital zoning, because that is, this is a zoning condition, and capital zoning is its own state entity for zoning in that area, and we do not include, Kamak Village is not part of our city. So it is just in the city limits, and every time we present, the money talked about it, we're going to present to either the commission and if to the board, the number that we are at currently and what this number would be. So at some point in time, as you get closer to that number, the 500, then once we reach that number, then there's no more that's allowed. And we'd have, we have to keep track of it, and then if some do come off, people do not renew their business license and operation, then anybody that applies could, you know, if there's a number there, if there's 10 lost, then we're allowed to do 10 back. We can get to the 500.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move forward with item number...
if the, if there's a number there, if there's 10 lost, then we're allowed to do 10 back. We can get to the 500.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move forward with item number 13 on the agenda. Monty, we'll have a reading on that.
Mr. Chair, prior to staff presentation on each of the remaining items, can we ask the applicant if they do want to proceed, given their...
Yes, we can ask, we can do that specifically. Is the applicant here for item number 13? Do you, so my question is, so we had seven applicants, seven, I'm sorry, commissioners a moment ago. You, you had a favorable vote of five-two, but you, it was, it was not passed because of the five, because we didn't get to six. With Commissioner Haynes's departure, we are at six commissioners. Okay, so we just, I want to know if, if you want us to move forward tonight with this application, or if you would like to defer. The deferral is at no cost to you. It just costs you time. Is that correct?
That is not.
That is not correct?
No. Bylaw says that if you get fewer than eight, if the applicant chooses to defer, it is at their cost of deferral.
It's at their cost. Okay, okay.
And, and every applicant is allowed two deferrals.
Okay, all right.
This would be just their first one if they...
Yes. Okay. So, defer or not to defer?
What do you mean exactly about is at the cost of us? I'm not sure what that...
You were allowed so many deferrals on an application before it is withdrawn. It cannot be heard within a year. But so, if you choose to, to take the deferral, that counts as one of your deferrals.
The, the cost, did he ask about, did you ask about cost?
Well, and then you have to, any re-notifications that you may have to do, proceed, is at your physical cost. It's not the, commission's not deferring it. They do not, you know, we won't notify everybody if the hearing date is set and the location. It'd be up to the applicant to do that, just like you did for this one.
Yeah, that was a process.
Mr. Chair, also on a first deferral, the applicant has to re-notify the surrounding property owners, but it's regular mail and not certified mail.
Well, that makes a difference, because that's...
Does make a difference.
I don't know what a stamp costs, but that's just like 75 cents a deal, so...
It was about $500 to send out all the letters. So, if it's, you know, less than that, I mean, we're willing to do it again if we need to. But it's, we don't have the right amount of people. We probably do need to defer.
So, deferral? For, okay. I think that's, I think that's a wise decision. My apologies again. Not only are we down a couple of commissioners from our 11 that the mayor appoints, but when you have a couple of absences, that, so, that's, sorry, I'm sorry for the deferral, but we'll see you next month, hopefully.
Mr. Chair, their deferral will be to November the 9th.
November the 9th.
No.
Next month, okay.
And for clarification, that is not a vote of the applicant requested that deferral.
Applicant requested the deferral. No need for us to vote. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, item number 16. I want to go through the same process and have the applicant come up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I apologize for interrupting. My name is John Bassett, and I am an interested party in this matter that has just been deferred. I would let you know that this company is currently operating an Airbnb at this location. They are marketing it and selling, renting it out right now, and advertising it as accommodating 12 people.
This chair, if I may interject, this item has been deferred at the applicant's request. We cannot hear anybody either for or against an item at this time.
Correct. Okay. Is the, is the applicant for item number 16 available? Okay. To, would you like to defer, or would you like to be heard tonight?
I'd like to be heard.
Like to be heard tonight. Okay, we'll have the reading. We'll have the reading first from Mr. Moore, and then after that, we, I have a number of cards here in opposition. So, you'll either be able to make a presentation, or you can speak after the opposition. But right now, we'll turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Okay. Item 16, file number Z-9834, Little Rock River View Retreat, STR2 PDC, located at 12,040 Rivercrest Drive. The applicant proposes to zone, to rezone this 0.46 acre property from R2 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside at the residence, and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property contains an existing two-story brick structure. Unit has a concrete circle driveway that can accommodate several vehicles. On June 20th, 2023, the Board of Directors passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals within the city of Little Rock. The new ordinance established development standards for short-term rentals, and if approved, the applicant must comply with the newly established development standards as noted in the staff analysis, in addition to any and all other requirements of the new ordinance. Staff is supportive of the requested PDC rezoning. Staff believes the request is reasonable, and the proposed STR2 is appropriate for this location, and staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs, in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report.
Okay, if you'll state your name as the applicant?
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for allowing me to speak. I'm Elona Kavalkuk. I'm a president of Little Rock River View Retreat LLC and owner of Marina Drive property, which will be the next case. I'm presenting this application for consideration before the committee for a short-term rental. I would like to address a few things that are important to consider. So, first is the location of the house. The property is located on the outer edge of a single-family subdivision and not in the center of a single-family neighborhood. The house is located on top of the hill on the edge of the city with no neighbors to the north of the property. Two is parking. I have sufficient parking. We have two-car garage, which can accommodate a total of two cars, two rectangular driveways, which can accommodate a total of six cars, and one circular driveway, which can fit two more cars. In total, we can provide parking for up to 10 cars for our short-term rental guests. However, most of our guests are out-of-state guests, and we've never seen that many cars at the property. But I would like to still emphasize that we have plenty of parking on our property and not on the street. Three, we prohibit parties, and we are taking it to the next level, and we prohibit loud noises altogether. We are in the process of installing a device right now that monitors sound levels and notifies us when it detects a noise. It is accessible from anywhere in the United States, allowing swift action on noise concerns. So, no loud noises allowed at all. These rules promote peace for guests and neighbors, and they align with Little Rock noise ordinances. Lastly, maintenance. We have two property managers, two cleaning companies, handyman crew, a number of other helpers that help us run the property. And based on historic data, our response time in emergencies is just 15 minutes. So, in summary, our Airbnb property is committed to upholding the local regulations and minimizing disruptions through measures like noise restrictions and parking guidelines. I believe our presence will not only enhance the neighborhood aesthetically, thanks to the property improvements we've made, but also contribute significantly to the local economy by creating jobs and generating tax revenue. Our overreaching goal is to operate responsibly, respecting both government rules and the harmony of our community. I would like to use the remaining time to address opponents and offer rebuttal.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a ton of cards on this one. I think we've got about 12 or 13 cards. So, remember, 20 minutes total. If you have a representative who's speaking for the neighborhood, is that, would that be you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you are?
Dalton Swindell.
Dalton Swindell. I have a card here for Dalton Swindell. So, Mr. Swindell, the floor is yours.
All right. My name is Dalton Swindell, and I'm an attorney. I represent Mr. John Moreau in his opposition to the issuance of the permit for a short-term rental 2 for the property located at 12040 Rivercrest Drive, Little Rock, Arkansas. This is not a pre-existing short-term rental 2 as addressed in some of the new regulations in the code. The code states in section 36601D that non-owner occupied short-term rental 2s, which have been, which have not been secured entitlement through a PZD and are in operation prior to six months of the passage of this ordinance, may potentially continue operation as a non-conforming use, provided owners and operators of the pre-existing STR2 apply for a PZD with the City of Little Rock Planning and Development Department within six months of the following of the passage, sorry, of this ordinance. If no applications received and/or if the PZD application's not approved, the property shall revert to its former status. The property began operating as a STR2 on or about April of 2023. The ordinance passed a few months later. This STR2 should not be considered as a pre-existing STR as it began operation less than six months prior to the passage of the ordinance. The current operation of such STR is unlawful. Currently, the STR is operating without a license. Section 36601B1 states that no person or entity shall advertise or operate a property for use as a bed and breakfast or short-term rental 2 without first having obtained Board of Directors' approval of a planned zone development, and business license is required. Section 36604A states that it's unlawful for any responsible party to offer for rent a bed and breakfast house or short-term rental 2, or to operate one without a business license. Owners shall not list a property or units online until they've received a business license. Operation of a short-term rental without a business license could make the owner ineligible to apply for a business license for up to one year. The operation of the property along with another short-term rental in the area have been continuously used and advertised on Airbnb by the applicant despite not having Board of Directors' approval or a business license. The applicant and owner should be precluded from applying for a business license for up to a year. Section 36601B states that a bed and breakfast house or short-term rental type 2 means a non-owner occupied, single-family or multifamily dwelling unit, which contains not more than five guest rooms, which for a fee may be occupied for no longer than 29 consecutive days. Section 36603B15 states, sets forth that every bedroom shall have a two-guest capacity. Despite what is stated in the application, the property located at 1240 Rivercrest is being advertised on Airbnb and rented as a three-bedroom house with a capacity of 11 guests. That's almost four guests per room. The code limits short-term rentals to two guests per room. The property should not be allowed to accommodate more than those six guests. Further, the short-term rental is being offered for more than the allowable amount of time on Airbnb. The Airbnb listing states, contact the host if, if it is for a long-term rental greater than 28 days for pricing. Pursuant to section 36603B6, applicants shall provide a scaled floor plan that includes all the rooms available for rent with the location of windows, doors, and smoke detectors identified. Smoke detectors are required in all sleeping areas in every room and the path of means of egress from the sleeping area to the exit in each story with a sleeping unit, including basements. Based on the documents my client received from the city in his FOIA requests, no detailed site plan was submitted by the applicant. signage was supposed to be, regarding the rezoning, was supposed to be part, supposed to be posted on the property or house in such a way that it could be visible from the street. The sign that was supposed to provide notice to the neighborhood was originally posted on the front door and visible from the street. A few days later, the sign was moved to the side-loading garage, rendering it out of view of the street. Eventually, the sign was completely removed from the property. As for special events, special events are not allowed pursuant to section 36603B1, which states, hosting of private parties and special events such as wedding receptions and other similar gatherings is not allowed in short-term rentals. Despite this rule, the Airbnb advertisement offers the Marina Short-Term Rental and the Ridgecrest Short-Term Rental in conjunction, and states that all events must be approved by the host rather than noting that private events are not allowed. Additionally, the advertisement includes photos showing what appears to be a private event with catering trays of food, bar tables with champagne, and balloons. This is just another instance of blatant disregard for the city's regulations. There have been various complaints at the land, at the owner's properties. My client and several other neighbors have concerns about the use of the property used as a STR2, and rightfully so. On or about September 23rd, 2023, at 11:30 in the morning, a tenant at the Airbnb located at 12040 Ridgecrest attempted forcefully in her neighbor's house. The footage was captured on Ring Video Doorbell and reported to LRPD. The neighbor called the owner, and the owner confirmed that it was one of the registered guests, guests at the Airbnb. The same group of tenants was seen on the back porch later at 12, 12040 Ridgecrest smoking what appeared to be marijuana. Additionally, there have been several instances when quiet hours were not observed by the tenants of the short-term rentals disturbing the neighborhood. Recently, a tenant at the Airbnb brought several large dogs that were aggressive, which constantly barked and attempted to climb over and through the fence, separating the Airbnb into Mr. Moreau's backyard to attack his dogs. Fortunately, they did not make it over. In regard to granting the rezoning from R2 used to a PZD, the city shall refer to the applicable section of the code being section 36451C to determine if rezoning would be appropriate. Section 34451C states that it is the intent of this article to ensure that applications are not granted for the sole benefit of the applicant, but are used to establish developments that are (1) compatible with the surround, the surrounding area; (2) are harmonious with the character of the neighborhood; (3) do not have a negative effect on future development of the area;[1580.33][1580.33](4) permit coordination of the planning of the land, the land surrounding the property;[1586.12][1586.12](5) create a desirable and stable environment. I believe that this, if this application's granted, it would be at the sole benefit of the applicant. We have nearly a dozen neighbors here today, all of which have signed a petition showing they're, showing that they're against this application. A short-term rental is not compatible with the surrounding area or harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood's a secluded and quiet neighborhood, not an area that has many short-term rental properties, if any. Based on the many complaints from the surrounding property owners, whether it's noise complaints caused by tenants and dogs, or an attempted break-in entering, or just the opposition of the neighbors are showing to this application, I don't believe that granting this application would create a desirable and stable environment in the neighborhood. In conclusion, we request the denial of the applicant's request to issue a short-term rental 2 permit and seek a business license due to the fact that the property's been operating as a short-term rental 2 while not having any permits or licenses required by the city, the failure to submit all required materials for the issuance of the permit, the house, and the numerous neighborhood complaints, and the short amount of time that the applicant has been operating her short-term rental in the area.
Okay, thank you very much. I have nine other cards here. How much time is left for the opposition, Mr. Thrower?
Eight minutes and 27 seconds. I have a lap, so it's just 11 and 12 minutes.
Okay, anyone else on this team that wants to follow up on what Mr. Swindell said? Okay, and your, your name is?
Hi, I'm Marcy Riggs.
Okay.
I live at 12,000 Rivercrest, which is right next door. I'm the one that had the kid, or I thought it was an adult, try to come into my house. It was a Saturday, it was a morning. I was sitting with my dog reading, and my ring went off that somebody was there. And, you know, I don't answer my door, but I never had a doorknob. I never had a doorbell. So, I pulled it up, and there's a person without a shirt on trying to stare through my window, and then goes over, and I can actually see from the inside where he is trying to open the door. Personally, that scared the crap out of me, because I live alone. So, you know, had I not locked the door, they would have walked in my house. Anyway, we are against, in the 12, in this first one on Rivercrest, we have a petition from the people that are with the, the 200-foot area, and there are 12 of us, and 11 of us have, houses have signed in opposition. Thank you.
Okay. Other folks who have filled out a card who wish to speak in opposition to this?
Hi there, I'm Katie Adams. I can talk kind of fast. So, I have a lot of different reasons for this that are different than the people who live directly next door. But I do want to address some of the things that she directly said. One of them is that it's at the end of the... One of them is that it's at the end of the street, it's isolated. Obviously, we see it does, it does hurt the people who are living close to them. But I live on South Ridge, and I'm a cut-through street. So, it's going to cause a lot of traffic down our street when it's already got a lot of traffic. So, that's kind of an issue for me regardless of where it's located. The second thing that I want to address is the fact that she said that parties are prohibited. Everybody knows that that is not something that you can control at times. So, my mother has an Airbnb in her neighborhood, and from day one, every single weekend is a party. And it's like kids just renting it out that live in Little Rock that just need a place to trash. So, I understand that, but I just don't think that can be controlled. The second thing is that she mentioned that she's hired a property management group or an Airbnb group. I've had nine years in property management. And I can tell you that whenever she says that somebody will be there in 15 minutes, that's not true. Not only have I had nine years in property management, I also worked with the locator here in Little Rock. And with doing so, I got to know a lot of the management companies in Little Rock. And they're not great. And I've shown places that literally look like they have not been touched whenever it comes to cleaning. So, I just don't think that that's a realistic expectation that when she lives so far away, all the way down in Florida, from what I understand, that a company is going to manage this properly for her because she's not going to know what's going on there. Another thing is that she said she's providing jobs, but at the end of the day, that's not her. That's the property management company that she's hired. I also want to say that it's, to me, it's not a vacation area. I'm in that age range where a lot of people are going out, and a lot of me and my friends, we will go to the lake or we'll go to the Ozarks or somewhere. And those are perfect locations for people to get together. This is not really a vacation spot. It's also not located to the hospitals where people would need to come to stay for a little bit longer or anything like that. So, I don't understand why it is what she would consider a good location in our city. Other than that, Marion? Thank you.
Okay, I think there are a few minutes left. If, and your name is?
My name is Marion Gavin.
If you'll step up to the mic, please, Ms. Gavin. I do have a card for you, so go ahead.
My name is Marion Gavin. I am the president of the Walton Heights Candlewood Homeowners Association. There's several things. I mean, you've heard a lot about the laws that have already been broken before it's even been approved from the lawyer. You've heard from a few of the neighbors. We've had more neighbors here. We've actually had over 20, but some have left. You also heard how the people who live within a 200-foot range have said that they oppose, and supposedly that is a, it would not be approved because of the number of people that have said no to wanting it. I also want to say that I do get a lot of calls and a lot of posts on our closed Facebook page about how terrible this is for our neighborhood and that it will, at some point, diminish the value of these homes who live close to this house that is a party house. The noise factor that she said she's putting in some, some sort of system. She says, "We'll know immediately." Well, who is monitoring that noise factor? Because there are parties, there are dogs. And just as the other person said, this is a neighborhood. This is a neighborhood with homes that are, some of them, $1 million and up. These are not some people who just let this slide by. They are very upset, many people in the neighborhood. Just wanted to make that point, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who filled out a card who wishes to speak? Just a little bit of time left, if, okay?
Good evening. My name's James Thomas. I live on Rivercrest Drive. I'm a retired police officer, 31 years, and I've had some professional contact with folks that stay in these Airbnbs. I think everybody here has probably stayed at a motel room at one time where somebody upstairs or beside you or behind you was enjoying their holiday. And it gets to be a problem. And when you have short-term rentals, my experience is, is that you have folks that they don't do the same thing they do when they're in their home, at home. You know, they look at their neighbors every day, and they're going to have to be responsible to their neighbors every day where they live. But when they're on holiday and they're only here for a couple of days, they tend to let their hair down, and it gets a little out of control. And more often than not, the police respond. Once the police respond, you have a, you have a report of an incident that occurs there. And when people look to buy a home, when I bought my home on Rivercrest after I retired, I ran a police report to see what kind of actions were going on up there. If you have a place and over the past 12 months it's had 15 calls for disturbance, do you want to live next door to that? We don't. And my wife and I oppose this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. How are we doing on time, Mr. Thrower?
16 minutes and 20 seconds has elapsed.
All right, I have a few more cards if there are others who have something else to add. Okay, if, okay, come on up, sir.
Sorry, I'm John Moreau, a little bit, 12060 Rivercrest Drive. The house that's applying to be our Airbnb. Stand by what the attorney said earlier. But I wanted to add that I felt really safe and comfortable in the neighborhood and living there in the last four years until there was an attempted home invasion on September 23rd at the other house next door to the Airbnb when the young man tried to break into her house. We've left our doors open or unlocked day after day with no thought of anyone coming into our home. But that sense of security has been broken now. So, I just want to say that we no longer have the peaceful enjoyment of our property with that fear, knowing that it's happened in the past and it can happen again with strangers coming into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come back up and address some of those issues? We can have you come back up, or we can go ahead and vote on this, either way.
Do I have a certain time?
Yeah, you've got plenty of.
16 minutes, 55 seconds remain over time.
You have 16 minutes plus.
Okay. So, a lot of points have been raised. I'll try to do a quick job. So, first of all, I'd like to say that I actually do love my neighbors, and I do love the neighborhood, and I'm a very responsible host. And I understand their concern for everything that they've raised. But I am a responsible person, and I'm ready to address every single concern that they have. Our neighborhood is diverse, and I appreciate your concern in the petition. It is important to remember that it might not represent the majority, though. The fact that some neighbors have signed a petition doesn't necessarily mean it represents the majority. I still believe that the commercial, short-term rental properties in residential areas can coexist. I'm dedicated to follow all local laws, regulations, ensuring that our property operates within the boundaries set by the government. So, it's been mentioned that we broke some kind of a law that we had no business license. I don't know a single person who operates an Airbnb and has a business license. So, I would like to have a little bit more elaboration on that issue. And if we do not comply, I will comply. So, that could be one of the things that you guys can put as a provision, and we will comply. But I have not heard that we need to have a business license in order to operate. As far as loud parties, no, we do not allow loud parties. And as I've mentioned, we do have noise monitors. Those are very comprehensive devices. We can set a set amount of decibels. And if it ever goes up above the specified units, not only the guests will be notified that they need to keep the noise down, but also us as owners will be notified. And we can, we have very strict guidelines that will eventually lead to either calling the police, which we've never had to do, or eviction or penalty. So, we have very strict guidelines. In addition to that, we do have a device that also counts number of cell phones in the house. So, let's say our irresponsible guest comes into the house, and they invite 30 more people, which are obviously against the rules. We will be alerted that the number of people rises in the house. And again, we can prevent the party before it even started. So, no, we do not allow it. But if it, if it will happen like that, we can start, we can stop the party before it even happens, before it even happens to be loud. Also, they've mentioned that we are out of state. So, I believe that property ownership rights should not be contingent upon the proximity of a host residence to a short-term rental property. Even hosts that residing next to their short-term rental properties may be absent at times, such as during vacations or business trips. It is not the absence of the owner nearby that causes issues, but rather absence of an effective management and effective plan in place to address potential issues. My property is equipped with state-of-the-art smart technology, allowing for remote management of various aspects from any corner of the world. That includes door locks, cameras, noise monitors, smoke detectors, and so much more. This technology ensures that the property remains well-maintained and secured. We have two property managers, not one, but two, who are in call 24/7. And the lady behind me, she's probably confused with the long-term management companies. They can take their time. We, as Airbnb hosts, we have no time. There is a very short turnaround of people, and problems need to address promptly. I also would like to add that despite the distance, I try to be a part of the community still. I actively participate in the neighborhood's Facebook page to maintain open communication and foster positive relationship with the neighbors. I really want that positive relationship. And that is why you guys see so many people right now sitting here because of that ongoing conversation. I was not sitting quietly at home, trying to hush everything under the carpet. We are actively discussing every single issue. So, that is why so many people are here. And I think that it's actually a good thing that we do that. And I would like to continue keeping the open conversation with them to maybe have a positive relationship. Lastly, hosts in-state or out-of-state are all expected to follow all applicable laws and standards. So, even if I'm out-of-state, I will still need to follow it. I believe we can still be good neighbors and law-abiding citizens if you're, even if you're not right next to the property. What else has been raised? So, loss of neighborhood character. I understand your concern in maintaining neighborhood feel in our community. And I want to assure you that as an Airbnb host, I'm equally interested in preserving the character of the neighborhood. My aim is to provide a positive and respectful experience for both guests and neighbors. And I'm committed to working together to maintain that neighborhood's charm. One of the big ones was an incident where a guest mixed up the houses and went to the neighboring house. And I've heard phrases here used such as "broke into a house." No one broke into the house. It turns out that a guest's son mistakenly went rent, went to the wrong house, the neighboring house. He did not go inside, he just approached it, like literally just approached it. And he is deeply sorry for any confusion and concern caused. The mix-up with the guest was indeed regrettable. And we have already taken measures to prevent any such misunderstandings in the future. So, we ensure that the house is clearly, has a clear property signage. It includes illuminated house numbers for nighttime visibility. We provided detailed arrival instructions for each guest. We included exterior photographs of the property for the instructions. We highlighted distinctive decor of the house, such as bright red entrance door, to help guests easily identify the space. Lastly, we supply a simple neighborhood map indicating the house location. By implementing these measures, we already help guests avoid confusion, which is a confusion, confusion, it was not breaking into the house as they are trying to describe it. What else have been brought up? Property values. We've put so much money into improving the properties. Unlike the previous people presenting, we took probably six months getting our houses ready with the smart technology, with a whole new brand deck, with the new painting jobs, with new garage doors. It's so much prettier than it was before. And we do take a very good care of the property. Our management team is simply amazing. So, I feel like we are only adding astately to the neighborhood. I'm not sure if insurance was, I'm already lost. There were so many things mentioned. Insurance, we have a proper, we have a proper insurance. We have a $2 million insurance. Policeman was standing here, and I appreciate that we have a police here. And I just wanted to make a note of that, that we've never had to call authorities. However, again, as being a good neighbor and a law-abiding citizen, if anything ever occurs, of course, we would contact authorities. Would it be just a simple house? Would it be my house? Would it be Airbnb house? If there is any violence, any breakage of the law, authorities will be involved. And people will be held accountable. Do you remember what else people wanted to address?
That's okay. I think you've addressed just about every concern they had. So, we, we've got three more of these after you guys, so.
Can I just mention one last?
Sure.
One last thing. It's just really a sentimental thing, not really something to the law. Our houses, this house and the next house, they offer a spectacular view of Arkansas's river, which sets this property apart. This attracts guests seeking a unique experience that encourages longer stays in guests who actually value a tranquil, tranquil atmosphere. In addition, this residential neighborhood is strategically located near the Two Rivers Park Bridge, offering easy access to the River Mountain Park Trail. And that trail goes straight through the, through the community. These natural attractions have been drawing visitors to the neighborhood. And I hope the city will consider allowing rezoning from residential to commercial short-term rental when it contributes to accommodating visitors and fostering positive view of Arkansas. The comments that are received from guests are just outstanding. When they stay at our properties and see that gorgeous view, their whole view of Arkansas just changes. And I feel like if there's only 500 licenses allowed per the city, my houses should receive that because these houses truly represent how beautiful our state is. And most of our guests are out-of-state guests. They're here maybe for sport tournaments or visiting their families or just out-of-state visitors. And they love seeing our state in such a view, with a great view. So, please consider that. It is a truly remarkable location, and I am a good neighbor. I totally understand their issues, but I'm ready to address every single one of them.
Thank you, thank you very much. If we don't have any questions from commissioners, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve a file Z-934 for approval of the PDC zoning request, subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E in the staff analysis.
I don't want to interrupt, but.
Questions have been made.
I.
I need to correct what she said?
Say.
He was well aware of what house it was, because he even says 12,000. Had my...
Chairman, I hope a motion's been made.
Okay, yeah. Ma'am, we've closed discussion on this right now.
Okay.
So I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Check it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from planning commissioners?
No.
Okay, Mr. Thrower. Brown?
No.
Haynes?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Ickers?
No.
Hart?
No.
Nothing fails. Okay, item number 17 is next. We've got three more of these guys. Item number 17 is next on our agenda. So reminding the applicant, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7. I have about 12 cards in opposition reminding the applicant that tonight, we've got six planning commissioners left to see this thing through. So can I have the applicant approach the podium, please? Okay, same applicant. Okay, do you want to defer, or you want this one to be heard?
I'd like it to be heard.
Like to be heard. Okay, all right. Mr. Moore, would you have the reading for item number 17, please?
Item number 17, file number Z-9835. This is a Kovalchuk STR2 PDC located at 13810 Marina Drive. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.15 acre property from R2 to PDC to allow the property as a short-term rental with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside at the residence. The entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property contains an existing two-story brick structure. The unit has a concrete circle driveway that can accommodate several vehicles. On June 20, 2023, the City Board of Directors passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals within the city of Little Rock. The new ordinance establishes development standards for short-term rentals, and if approved, the applicant must comply with the newly established development standards as well as other requirements of the code. Staff is in support of the requested PDC rezoning. Staff believes the request is reasonable, that the proposed STR2 is an appropriate use for this location. And staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report.
Okay, we have the applicant at the podium. I do have a number of cards here in opposition. Do you want to wait until you've heard them, or is there an introductory statement you'd like to make?
I would like to use the remaining time to address opponents.
Okay, all right. Is there a speaker for the opposition? Okay, this is deja vu. Okay, Mr. Swindell.
Once again, to avoid the deja vu, would y'all rather me forego reciting the precise code rules and just go straight into analysis?
Certainly, we would, but it's your time. So you do what you want to do with that time. I would say this, the last group was pretty passionate about speaking, Mr. Swindell. And so I think I have more cards for this one than I did for the other one.
Okay.
Some of them may be the same people. So however you want to do it, however you want to use your 20.
Yes, sir. All right. So the code states that an STR can be grandfathered in if it's preexisting prior to six months of the passage of the code. That isn't applicable to this one. The property began operating as a short-term rental on about April of 2023. The ordinance was passed a few months later. This short-term rental shouldn't be considered preexisting because of this. The current operation as such is unlawful. Currently, the property's being advertised and rented out as a short-term rental. It's been continuously advertised as such. Section 36604A states that it's unlawful for a responsible party to offer for rent a bed and breakfast house or short-term rental to or to operate one without a business license. Owner should not list a property or units online unless they've received a business license. Operation of a short-term rental without a business license could make the owner ineligible to apply for a business license up to one year. This is occurring at two locations presently. We think that the applicant and owner should be precluded from applying for a business license for up to a year. Section 36601B states that a bed and breakfast house or short-term rental type 2 means non-owner occupied, single-family or multifamily dwelling unit, which contains not more than five guest rooms, for which for a fee may be occupied for a guest for no longer than 29 consecutive days. Section 36603B15 sets forth that every bedroom shall have a two-guest capacity. Despite what's stated in the application, the property located at 13008 Marina Drive is currently being advertised and rented on Airbnb as a six-bedroom house with a capacity of 16 guests. And if rented in conjunction with the Rivercrest House, they have a capacity of 27 guests combined. And two guests... And, okay, so the property shouldn't be allowed to operate as a short-term rental because it has too many bedrooms to be qualified to operate as such. Further, the short-term rental is being offered for rent for more than the allowable amount of time on Airbnb. The listing states, "Contact the host if it is for a long-term rental greater than 28 days." Pursuant to section 36603B6, applicant shall provide the scaled floor plan showing all bedrooms, so on and so forth. Based on the documents my client received and his FOIA request from the city, no detailed site plan was submitted by the applicant. Further, had the plan been submitted to the applicant, it would have revealed that there are six bedrooms as opposed to five, which was listed in the application, and six is being advertised on Airbnb presently. The same complaints that happened at the Rivercrest location are concerns of the neighbors here at Marina. Clearly, while the applicant may have procedures in place, those procedures are not being followed through with very carefully if recurring incidents have happened. And we also do have a video of the Ring Doorbell security footage. I'll let Marcy share that if she would like. And then in regard to granting the rezoning from R2 to planned zoning development, the city shall refer to the applicable section of the code being section 36451C to determine if the rezoning would be appropriate. This section states that it's the intent of the article to ensure that applications are not granted for the sole benefit of the applicant but are used to establish developments that are, one, compatible with the surrounding area, two, are harmonious with the character of the neighborhood, three, do not have a negative impact on the future development of the area, four, permit coordination of the planning of the land surrounding the property, and five, create a desirable and stable environment. I believe that if this is granted, it will once again be at the sole benefit of the applicant. A short-term rental is not compatible with the surrounding area or harmonious with the manner of the neighborhood. This is a secluded area of town, really. While it is in West Little Rock, it's nowhere near any of the major attractions to town. It's not an area many short-term rental properties are even located. And based on the many complaints from the surrounding property owners, whether it's the noise caused by the tenants and dogs and attempted breaking and entering, which we do have on video and can show, or the opposition of the neighbors that are here to this application, I don't believe that granting this application will create a more desirable and stable environment than what we have now. In conclusion, we request the denial of the applicant's request, issue a short-term rental to permit, and seek a business license due to the fact that the property's been operating as a short-term rental despite not having the requisite permits or licenses, the failure to submit all required materials for the issuance of a permit, the house has more dwelling units than allowed for the issuance of a short-term rental to permit, and the numerous neighborhood complaints in the short amount of time that the applicant has been operating her properties in the area.
Okay, thank you very much. Continuing with opposition, if you choose to speak, I've got a card here from Priscilla Enman. Priscilla, do you want to speak? Or?
Yes, sir.
No? Robert Cushman?
I just want to say, this is in my neighborhood, too, the same neighborhood with 1204...
Okay, and you are...
...Rivercrest Drive. Robert Cushman.
Robert, okay.
And I'm in opposition to this for all those same reasons.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And thank you for your keeping that brief. Appreciate Okay, who else filled out a card? Who would like to speak? Come on up, ma'am, and tell me your name, and I'll set your card aside here.
Hi, I'm Janice Almefte. I live on Marina Drive. There are four houses on Marina Drive and one vacant lot. And all of us are here in opposition to this. It is a small street. There is very little... It's a dead end. So even the garbage truck has to back up to go out the street. So having a lot of cars on the street would be actually kind of detrimental to emergency vehicles or anything, too. She has talked about the management company being so thorough. I'm assuming part of the cleaning or management is coming to remove the trash cans. And I know there's a city ordinance about they're supposed to be removed within like a little over 24-hour period. That does not happen at all. I think, you know, it is a very, I mean, small, safe, secure street. We never even think about having to be concerned about our door being locked. You leave your screen doors open. I mean, it's just a very private, private little street. And we know our neighbors. They're all with me here. And we are totally, totally against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who filled out a card who has something else to add? Yes, ma'am?
Again, I'm Marion Gavin. I'm the president of the HOA. What she neglected to say is you have everyone on the street and within 200 feet, I should say, not just on this street, except obviously for the owner of this house, that have signed and said that they are against this. So what is that, 10? 10 lots, maybe, altogether? So out of 10 lots, nine have said no, which, from what I understand, means that it could not be approved. I also want to say that this is an obvious commercialization of a neighborhood, which is a neighborhood. This particular street, Marina, does have the million-dollar houses on it. Not all of them, but this is the street with the million-dollar houses. This is commercialization of a neighborhood, very close, one way in, one way out. As she said, the end of the street is a dead end. That particular house on the dead end has a very large driveway. So everyone who goes down the street by mistake, they go into this other person's driveway, back up, and to leave because there is no other way to turn around. You have to actually back up. It's not a good place to have a lot of people. The fact that she's advertising it as a place to have a party with tables set up, with glasses, with champagne, with all the rest, I don't know how much more obvious it could be that this is for that reason. That is how she is advertising it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on either side, either applicant or, who has something to add that hasn't already been said? Yes, sir?
David Straub. I'm a resident of Rivercrest Drive. I live at 13700 with my wife. We lived there 47 years. We have spent time at this board. The reason we spent time at this board is because it was proposed early on to connect Rivercrest with Highway 10 down by the Kroger store. We determined that that would be a terrible thing for us because of increase of traffic and the danger to children. I'm not talking about all the other things, by which I wholeheartedly agree, all the other objections. Let's talk about safety for a minute. The neighborhood is a long, long street, and it's easy to go fast on those streets. Coming down to this house in Marina is a steep hill, and people tend to go fast. But most of them are neighbors, so they know better. They know I'm going to be backing out of my driveway, and they better look out because that old man's going... I'm going to hit him. There are three families of young children within 100 yards of this house. It is inevitable that people that don't live there, that are only there for two weeks, will almost certainly speed down that hill, endangering the lives of these children, also the deer. We won't worry about that. So I'm opposed because I believe this area is safe for children, safe for old geezers like me. And this will decrease the safety of our neighborhood. The increased traffic by people who don't live there and don't know about what's going on will inevitably speed down that hill. And I'm opposed to this for that reason and the other reasons you've heard here before. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, we don't have any sidewalks. You know that. There are no sidewalks up there. We walk in the streets. There are no sidewalks up there. The children across the street wave to me. And I say hello. They know better than... They don't play in the streets, but occasionally they forget and walk out in the street to greet me. It scares me to death as it is. But all of our neighbors know we've got children there. And what the heck, they're going to slow down. They slow down. You don't see very much speeding up there. But it won't be so with people that don't know anything about the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And no backyards.
Okay. All right.
Can I just say one line?
Yeah, sure. Come on up to the podium.
Apart from no sidewalks, that's extra important because most people do not have backyards that are playable. We're on top of that mountain. The backyards are very steep. So most children are playing in the front yard. And again, we have no sidewalks at all through the entire neighborhood. It's the worst thing about the place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to come back up, or... And again, you don't have to address every concern they've raised, or we...
I will not this time. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone coming. It was very good to hear from a lawyer, those specific points, even though honestly, it was really hard for me to understand. Could you please tell me, do we need a business license to operate?
Yeah, so I'll let either Jamie or our attorney address that. But I believe the ordinance that recently was passed by the city of Little Rock does require a business license. Jamie?
Yes, it does. And this way I can explain it. Also, we'll clarify some of the issues brought up at the very first. If an entity has a short-term rental is operating, everyone at the passage of the ordinance to this date, if it wasn't already zoned, was operating without a business license in the city. The ordinance that was passed was to get them regulated. So the process of... So if we get a complaint and we investigate, and they are short-term rental, they're operating, then they are noticed. Upon that notice, they can cease to operate within seven business days, or they can seek remedy. Remedy is rezoning of the property is also the remedy. Once it's in rezoning, we do not issue a citation because they are proceeding with the process until it ends at the board, planning commissioner or the board of whether it's approved or denied. And then we continue with the enforcement if they are... If they continue to operate if it gets denied, or if it's approved, then we would enforce the regulations, the development standards that are stated in there. But a business license is needed to operate, but you cannot get a business license to operate until it is zoned properly.
Yes, that's what I thought. That's exactly what I thought. So no one has business licenses right now. It was a new law that passed...
There's a number that has it. I don't know the exact number that has...
But a little one, right? And this new law passed in July. And I applied right away. And I'm standing here right now to rezon the property to obtain all the proper documentation and the business license and whatever else is required. So all these citations that have been mentioned through the ordinances have been passed just in this July. And it's expected of us to rezon the property and comply with all of that. It is impossible to comply with everything immediately once it's passed. And it's not even... I don't know, maybe I would need to... And it's, it's not even, I don't know, maybe I would need to investigate this a little bit further.
You're right. No, that's correct, and that's what Jamie was saying. Once, once the process.
I felt like I'm following the correct process.
I believe that you are. I'm not, we're not saying that you're not.
So I'm a little bit upset that my previous motion was completely thrown out, and every single commissioner voted no. And I honestly, I don't even understand why.
Yeah.
No, I understand, yes, I understand that that neighbors are here and they raise their concerns, but I would like to see where am I wrong? What can I correct? If I, if I need to come back here and re-appeal, I need to correct my actions. And so far, all I received is a no, 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 with zero explanation. What did I do wrong?
Chairman Hart, may I address that, please?
Yeah, we're, I'm gonna let our attorney address.
It's not that you've done anything wrong, but when the commission looks at these things, and whether it's a short-term rental or anything else, it always has to take into account the public safety, health, and welfare. And so when they looked at the application, and I always tell them this, one thing that the commission cannot do is act arbitrarily or capriciously. And I'm not going to go over every pin, every point that the, the people that opposed your application made. It's a matter of the record. But they have to weigh the different evidence that you're, the material in your statements in your application. And then the, the board has to weigh what the neighbors say. And then they, based upon the public safety, health, and welfare, they have to make a decision, and it has to be rationally based. And so there's not that you've done anything wrong. It's just that they're listening to the testimony of all the parties. They take it into account, and then they have to make a rationally based decision, if that makes sense.
Yes, and I would like to also say that most of the comments that were risen just now occurred over the last, I don't know, maybe months. As soon as they were notified that I will be applying for a license, then those little issues appeared, like dog barking. I'm sorry, dogs bark. I apologize that it happened, really. I do not, I wish I could control dogs, but they do bark, you know? And the guest, unfortunately, went to the wrong house because he confused it, and we should not look at his appearance. Yes, he had, he didn't have the short on, but it could have been my son. I don't know, I'm just a little bit upset that we've been operating very responsibly for half a year, and nothing ever was.
We understand. We're not, we're not saying you're irresponsible. Let me give you an example. Earlier tonight, we denied a planned residential development. And all of the, to the best of my knowledge, we approve planned residential developments each and every month at this planning commission. But there were a number of things about this particular residential development that didn't, when you took into consideration the neighborhood and the floodplain and the traffic and the way it fit into the neighborhood. And so it's not that anyone did anything wrong when that, when that planned development was submitted. It is simply just that we take everything into consideration, not, not just the fact that one followed all the rules. That, that's, that's not, if, if it was as simple as that, there would be no planning commission or no board. We would just have a team of lawyers looking at the ordinance. So, okay, we need to vote on this. We, guys, we still have two of these things left, two short-term rentals left tonight. So, so in the interest of the people who have not had their item heard, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for approval for Z-9835, for approval for the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in the paragraphs within, including staff analysis.
We have a motion and...
Second?
A second. Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
No.
Haynes?
Latur?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
No.
Hart?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, item number 18 is next. I would like to call the applicant up as the room clears and make sure that the applicant still wants to move forward at this point. Again, we've got six commissioners hanging in here, but you will need all six yes votes in order for this to pass.
Yep, we can proceed. I'm good to proceed.
Yes, sir. You, state your name and...
Keith Freeman.
Okay, Keith.
I'm here with my wife Allison Freeman, and we own the property at Jerome Drive.
Okay. You want to be heard tonight or defer?
Uh, I can be heard.
Okay, all right. Let's have the reading from Mr. Moore first, and then we'll move forward.
Item 18, follow Z-9836. This is the Freeman STR2 PDC located at 14515 Jerome Drive. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.93-acre property from R2 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental, too, with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside at the residence, and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property contains an existing split-level wood structure. The unit has a driveway that can accommodate several vehicles. On June 20th, 2023, the city board of directors passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals within the city of Little Rock. The new ordinance establishes development standards for short-term rentals, and if approved, the applicant must comply with the newly established development standards in addition to all other requirements of the new ordinance. Staff is in support of the requested PDC zoning. Staff believes the request is reasonable and to propose STR2 is appropriate for this location. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Okay, we've got, I've got a couple cards here, so you can speak or make a presentation, or we can wait until after they speak. Your choice.
Yeah, I'll say a few words and then happy to reply. Explain to everyone kind of what the, our thought is with this property. First of all, I was born and raised in Little Rock, went to Christ, my kids went to Christ the King, were members of the Greek Orthodox Church. This is not a business for us. It's literally a home that we bought as a second home so that we could visit our family. We moved out of state about four years ago. And like I said, this is primarily a second home. We plan on spending Thanksgiving there. We plan on spending Christmas there. We had her dad's birthday party there a couple weeks ago. So the primary reason we want it to be a short-term rental is to help cover our ongoing kind of cost-to-own costs. Again, we don't want parties there any more than anyone else would want parties there. We have security cameras on the outside of the house. The way I understand the motion, the rules are you get three strikes and you're out, right? If three, if you get three noise complaints, then you immediately get suspended for a year on your rental. So I don't know about y'all, but I would love to have a neighbor that I could have three strikes on and get them to be quiet sometimes. We put $40,000 into the house already to fix it up. An entire side of the house had mold all over it and was deteriorating with an old deck that we replaced. So we're hiring a landscaper to maintain all the landscaping. And there's plenty of parking. The houses on over are close to an acre lot. It's very wooded, very private, very secluded, so I don't see intruding on any of the neighbors as a problem. So with that, I'll answer any other questions.
Okay, great. I've got just a couple cards here. If I've still got my cards in the right pile. David Harris, 14615 Shepherd.
My name is David Harris. I live on Shepherd Drive, about, at the bottom of the hill and about a half a block from the house in question. Primarily, we were here tonight because we felt like we should be here, weren't sure what was going on. We didn't know these people. We didn't know their story. We just felt like we didn't need a motel in our neighborhood. It's a strictly single-family residential neighborhood. You know, I guess if, what the gentleman just said is, you know, that it's more of a second home, you know, and he's trying to recoup some of his costs, my main concern would be with traffic and parking. The house in question is at the corner of Jerry and Jerome. It, Jerome dead ends at Jerry at one end, and it dead ends at Old Oak at the other end, which I'm sure you probably remember your time spent on Old Oak issues. And so, you know, it's at the very top of a hill. It doesn't matter whether you're coming up Jerry from the north or from the south. It is, you have limited sight distance. You cannot see over the top of the hill coming from either direction. There's been many would-be accidents happening in that corner. Say, for instance, they were to rent the house for a family reunion. I don't know where all of those cars would park because we have problems with just, you know, with trash pickup, with, and small things on the street already. You know, it doesn't say no parking, but there have been many wrecks or close to, and close calls, you know, based on the fact that this is at the very top of a hill, and whoever developed the property to begin with wasn't concerned with traffic safety. Like I said, it's, you know, limited sight distance, no matter which direction you're coming from. Those would be my primary concerns, in that we just didn't really feel like we needed a motel in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Charles Carter?
My name is Charles Carter. I live on Shepherd Drive. I've lived on Shepherd Drive six-fifths of my, six-fifths of my life. My grandparents raised me. They built the third house on the street. Your house was the first house in the neighborhood. And yes, it was up in the country, and it is, the road is weird, the streets, it looks nice and wide on the camera, but all they ever did was just add gutters, you know, to the side of it for street improvements. And a lot of people use Jerry, come across Jerry now and drive down my street for cut-thrus to avoid where the intersection is of Taylor Loop and the Highway 10. My biggest problem, I guess, about that is, is since I've lived in the neighborhood so long, I expect it to be a residential neighborhood, not, you know, someplace where you, you know, you have a transient audience coming through or people coming through all the time. And I live on the, the older part of the street anyhow, and so, you know, I, there's some other people that are, older neighbors that, well, I know everybody. I've been there since the beginning. And, you know, we have concerns about traffic, people cutting through, and, and, you know, there's concern about the Old Oak. I know it was built to be a feeder, but how much, you know, once they do the highway, how much more is that going to affect traffic? But that's, I guess, my biggest concern with that is, you know, how much parking on the street is. And, I mean, I'm glad that they're not going to do like the previous situations where, where it's a party, you know, kind of thing set up. Because my, my parents lived next to one on the lake, and they, the house had their license taken away because after they burned down the shed next door and stole their boat. I mean, you know, so I have a bad experience, a taste in my mouth about it, you know? So that's my, just my main concern, you know, as being a longtime resident and being able to live there since it was a gravel road that I lived on, you know? Thank you. I know y'all are ready to go home.
Thank you. I'd like to come back up and address.
Yeah, so I understand about the parking on the street. There are people that park on the street right now, and I get it. We have a tremendous, we have a three-car carport garage, three-car carport, and then there is room for three more cars outside that carport, and then you could probably stack three or four cars up the driveway. That'll never happen. Point being, people will park on the carport or the driveway and not on the street. We'll encourage that. We'll require it if we can. So that's for parking. And, yeah, I mean, I understand the concern with, it's not going to be a motel. Again, this is a second home for us. We'll offer our phone number, contact information to neighbors. We don't want it to become that. Again, this is an investment for us. We don't want it to go down in value. We don't want to do anything negative to the neighborhood, so, yeah.
Commissioners, any questions?
What's your, what's going to be your maximum occupancy for that rental?
Uh, well, if the requirement is two per room, then that puts, we have four bedrooms, so that's eight people. So one family, a couple kids.
So it could potentially be up to, let's say, four cars, four vehicles there at once, potentially?
There could be, I guess, if you have.
And you have a two-car, two-car garage?
We have a three-car carport plus...
Three-car carport, okay.
Plus room for three cars outside, like flat area outside that carport, and then a very long driveway. Again, this is on a, almost an acre plot of land.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Surrounded by trees and forest, you know?
Okay, anything else? All right, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item Z-9836, approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in the paragraphs within, including staff analysis.
Very much. We have a motion. And do we need a second? We do.
Second?
And we got a second? Okay, Mr. Thrower. Seconds are hard to come by at nine o'clock at night. Okay, it's just eight. Man, it feels like nine. Okay. Mr. Thrower, roll call.
Brown?
Yes.
Haynes? Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Thomas? Vogel? Vickers?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six votes.
Okay. Last item of the night. Sorry you guys ended up last on the agenda. Item number 19. I do want to give the applicant an, just again, let you know that we, we are down to six, and you will need all six votes. So is the applicant here, first of all? Do we have the applicant for number 19 present? No. Really? Do, do I have the, Monty, do I have?
Is Judy Bowe in the audience? Is Judy Bowe?
I will go and check the ancillary room.
Mr. Thrower, please go check outside so they may be there.
I'll go check the ancillary room and see if anybody's...
Folks, I am, if the applicant is not here, it is, cannot be heard, and so you have sat for four hours, and you're not gonna, it can't be heard. That is, that is a, that is a due process law. So we're going to try to find the applicant, and then... Well, they would get a deferral, and they go on next month's schedule. That... They'll have to pay for re-notification and all of that, yes, but... Well, the, the process is that they'll have to re-notify all of the neighbors. So there's costs associated with that. The male, yeah. Well, let us, I tell you what, we're not, we're not supposed to hear from you if we can't hear from the applicant, so y'all are going to get me in trouble if you keep talking. So hold on just a second. Let's see if we can find the applicant. We've waited this long. I apologize, guys. We normally, this doesn't happen very much. Okay, Mr. Thrower, any luck?
The applicant is not in the building or in the parking lot.
Okay, so that is a, do we have to vote on this, or is that just an automatic?
It cannot be heard. There's an automatic deferral. They are not here. We cannot hear on either side.
I'm sorry, guys. This is an automatic deferral beyond our control. Okay, anything else coming before the planning commission tonight? That's the last thing I had on the agenda.
That is the last item. I just want to remind the commission, everybody that lasted this long, thank you very much. You might get something special one day for your extra, extra service for tonight.
Okay.
I also wanted to remind everybody that if you didn't hear, there was a kick... I also wanted to remind everybody that if you didn't hear, there was a kickoff for the downtown master plan that happened last night. And so the process is starting, so I will present statuses to the commission as the process goes along, because there will be a final presentation at the end that will go to the commission, and then also go to the board for adoption.
Okay.
So just wanted to remind you of that. Keep track of it. If you want any information at any given point in time, please let me know.
Mr. Vickers, will you be here next month? Because I will not be here next month at a wedding.
Yes, I will be here next month.
Okay, all right, good deal.
I will fulfill any duties that-
That's great. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.